Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Stillen County Planning Commission, March 16th, 2023. May I have a roll call, please?
This is way further away than the one that the normal staff take on now. Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Gelardi?
Here.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Here.
Commissioner Konigshofer?
Here.
Jerry McCaffrey?
Here. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to public wishes and one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any correspondence of note?
There is no particular correspondence, but to provide an update to the commission, on Tuesday, March 14th, the board voted on the Wyngerehi ordinance, the gas station ban, and the tiny home trailer rental products, all with a favorable vote for approval.
Thank you. Are there any planning commission or Board of Supervisor actions we should?
Uh, absolutely.
Any Commissioner announcements?
Now, I'll announce now some of the items on our agenda. I've been doing vacation rentals. I'm a former employee of the county, been retired almost two years, and I've talked to a lot of people in a lot of these neighborhoods. So just want to let you all know I'm very familiar with all of the areas.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, did you want us to do? We might as well go ahead and do disclosures.
Yeah.
Like Commissioner Gelardi, I did work for the county for quite a minute, quite a number of years, and unfortunately didn't have enough time to visit all of these sites that are on our agenda today. But I am very familiar with some of these areas, and my years of work for the county, and so I feel comfortable and at least knowledgeable about the various areas. Thanks.
Yes. Following the standard set by my two colleagues, I too worked for the county. I left county employment in January of 1981. I'm really foreign yet. And I'm familiar with every note and cranny.
I didn't like it though.
I didn't.
I was a lifer.
I didn't either. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments for non-agenda items, this time set aside for comments for items that are not on today's agenda. For items on today's agenda, there are speaker cards available, and you can put them in the box on the side there. Anybody with a comment on an item that is not on today's agenda? Okay? Yes, come on, come on to the podium, please.
All right. Hi, my name is Robert Colby. I live down in Montreal. And I, just because I'm not completely familiar with the agenda, I read the tags, but, oh, nice. The thing I'm interested in commenting on is overall process, because I get notices, I read, here's the recommendations. I seem to be a little late in the process, because what I want is input into the recommendations before they're recommended and decided. So is there a way to plug into the process earlier? And what is that process? Or what is that path?
We can answer it after the public comment on non-agenda items period is complete.
Okay.
We'll get you an answer.
Perfect, thanks.
Anyone else for a comment on a non-agenda item?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Eric Fraser, and I head up a research team about a variety of different issues. I'm commenting now because you just had us repeat a note that I really love, that ends with the concept of justice for all. And like the speaker before me, commenting on opaque processes that govern rulemaking, where my research has also found that there's processes that are delivering unjust moments when it comes to code enforcement, when it comes to creating policies and how they're enforced, when it comes to the production and the use of facts when policy is being discussed. And so I just ponder, really, this concept of justice for all when it's not based on facts, and when it's not based on conversations centered around facts that we call create and verify. So thank you for spending the moment with me, but definitely weighs heavily on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment on the non-agenda item? Okay, I'll close comments on non-agenda items, and I think we had a question from one of the commenters about asking about being part of the process and getting the notices on things before things are recommended. Is there any recommendation of how that could be?
I will have our comprehensive planning manager get a card for you, as well as we have a notification list that can be signed up for online, and I'm sure the process for this particular ordinance item is going to be covered in the staff presentation.
And one comment I can make about that is that typically these items are brought forth first if the Board of Supervisors is giving the direction to the Planning Commission to look at an item, direction the staff, and so attending a Board of Supervisors meeting when this subject comes up is also another way to get involved in the process. Yes?
I may comment on the question as well. It's not easy, and it's a defect in the way a lot of this stuff unfolds, that people aren't aware of it until pretty far down the road. Some of that is just practicality, that not feasible to inform everybody in the county about everything that is coming on. In the case of the vacation rental ordinance, I would be interested to hear how that unfolds, because I've run into a lot of people that have concerns about vacation rentals, but their neighborhoods were never aware of this process and its development. So, you know, I think it is a problem, and I would say there isn't really any kind of easy solution to it. The burden is often on the citizen to track stuff that's really difficult to do in terms of time and such. So I would say that this cycle is, you know, will do what it's proposed to do today, but that it's also, I think, a notice to the broader community with concerns of vacation rentals, that there might be more activism aimed at protecting additional neighborhoods that have concerns that fall similar to the ones that are being addressed today.
Can I just have one thing to add?
Yes.
I think Commissioner Conne recovered it very well. There's two kinds of things that we deal with and that ultimately go to the Board of Supervisors. One are projects. A development project oftentimes will not get much of a notice until the application's completed and reviewed by the staff, and then noticed for hearings. This is the other side. A policy or regulatory initiative like this does flow from a much broader discussion and early discussion at the Board of Supervisors, and the best way to track that kind of stuff is read materials that are put out by your supervisor. I know these supervisors, Hopkins and Supervisor Warren, put out regular newsletters in various media outlets. Those are the kind of things I think you have to pay attention to, to try to get early notification that something's going on, even though it's such a general detail that, you know, it's difficult to really know when it's going to come around, and is it going to affect my parcel or my community? So, but that's the best way I can do it. Otherwise, just watch, just track board agendas. And you can do all that kind of stuff online, you know, if you're retired like me, it's a little bit easier than if you're working a regular job. But I think those are, Commissioner Konigshofer's right, those are, I have to kind of read the tea leaves and what's going on. But definitely get on the department's special notice list that Cecily mentioned. That's a specific notification when something is ready for hearing, not necessarily waiting in advance, but at least when something is ready for hearing, you get a direct notice to your Gmail box. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So at this point, we move on to item number one, ZC 23-0001, Vacation Rental Rezon.
Thank you, Chair. Whoops. Thank you for joining. Thanks to Chair McCaffrey and members of the commission. I'm Gary Helfrich. I'm the project planner for the first phase of some board-directed action to do a vacation rental rezoning. And this rezoning is specifically directed at areas that have been identified as having over-concentration. And the areas that we're reviewing today are ones that the First District, Fourth District, and Fifth District offices have identified for staff and directed staff to review those areas. Before I get into that recommendation, though, first make sure that everyone, this is for the public, is understand what vacation rentals are and what these regulations are going to do. So it is rental of an entire single-family dwelling for 30 or more days. So just to clarify, that doesn't mean a bed and breakfast, it doesn't mean if you're doing a house share, it doesn't mean if you're doing a hosted rental where you're in residence and you're just renting out a room. This is the only whole-house rentals, people think of those as an Airbnb, but that type of use of residential property. The other thing that's very important is, and I'm going to say this a few times, just so everyone's clear on it, is these regulations are not retroactive. They do not affect anybody's existing entitlements. The people who have valid vacation rental permits can continue to operate that vacation rental until such time as the property is sold or, in unusual circumstance, revoked for failure of follow conditions of approval. But the board, the direction from the First, Fourth, and Fifth District offices was to focus only on over-concentration. There's a lot of other issues involved around regulating vacation rentals, and permits in Sonoma will be doing the detailed analysis to bring back other proposals for rezoning areas to limit or exclude vacation rentals. But that analysis wasn't possible to be done in a timely manner, and the concern is to take care of the neighborhoods that are really at risk from seeing too many vacation rentals before the county's moratorium expires on May 9th, 2023. Also, in recognition of the action that the board took in August, we're not considering rezoning on any R1 parcels, and specifically Gurnville, Riadito, and Vacation Beach were all neighborhoods that were studied as part of the 2020 urgency ordinance. But first of all, in the case of Riadito and Vacation Beach, they're completely R1 zoning. Gurnville is mostly R1, except for an unusual area that is residential development and a limited commercial zoning district. But staff also recognizes, and so do supervisors, that the situation of Lower Russian River is fairly unique. We have a tourism-based local economy, and we really don't have a lot of lodging in that area. So the other direction we've gotten from the board is to develop an overlay district that could allow a certain number of vacation rentals, you know, it's going to involve identifying the carrying capacity and balancing economic development with protection of housing stock in those areas. But we are very much aware of the dependency of Lower Russian River Tourism Economy on having adequate lodging for visitors to that part of the county. We would also look at other areas as well, but Lower Russian River has an unusually high concentration of vacation rentals compared to other parts of Sonoma County, and we'll discuss that soon when we get into the individual areas. The board, one of the board's actions they took in August was to amend Article 79, so it no longer is just an exclusion on vacation rentals. The Article 79 also allows for tapping vacation rentals within a specific neighborhood to either 5% or 10%, and this is the important concept, of residentially developed parcels. So essentially, for if it's a 5% cap, that means one vacation rental per every 20 homes. 10% cap is one vacation rental for every 10 homes. The criteria hasn't changed, and I wanted to put it up here just to remind everybody of what the criteria is for imposing either a cap or an exclusion. In the case of today's action, we're mostly looking at preservation of housing stock and preserving residential character or community character. There is one exception on Gates Road, where input we've gotten from fire service and the location of that area creates a special case where, because of extreme high fires danger, we're recommending that one, that area for an exclusion zone as well. So that got added to the First District recommendations after request of the supervisor. The reason you use these two tools, though, is important. Exclusion zones are not really that scale-dependent, where vacation rentals for any of those findings that are in Article 79, future ones need to be limited, we can apply an exclusion zone. And it could be a handful of properties that's surrounded by areas where you can't have vacation rentals, and that's a situation we have in a neighborhood called Theodore Lane, down in First District, where everything around it is an exclusion zone, and now 40% of the homes have been converted to vacation rentals. Clearly, we can argue about what the threshold is, but if four out of 10 homes are occupied as transit rentals every weekend, that really affects the neighborhood. Caps are a different tool, because caps really have a maximum and minimum size where they're most effective. We didn't recommend putting those limits in the ordinance, because all of this has to be context-sensitive. But the range is generally between 150 and 400 to 500 parcels. If you're smaller than that, for example, if you've got a 5% cap and you've got a neighborhood with, we have one of these examples in here, 49 homes in there, well, that means it's one, that's how many you can have there. If there's two, then it goes back to, it's just not very effective, because the numerator in that equation is effective very quickly. So most of these areas that we've identified for caps, the recommendation is a 5% cap for now, and the other direction that we received from the board is when we come back for Phase Two of this project is to reevaluate whether 5% was the right number. And that's also, of course, the commission's prerogative would be to recommend to the board a different number than the cap percentage that staff is recommending. Our recommendation just reflects the direction from that particular district office. Oops, what happened to that? This is just an overview of the ordinances that led us to where we are today. The important thing that we're going to be referring to in the Fifth District is that 2020 inter-urgency cap ordinance. We relied on that quite a bit to define neighborhood boundaries. They're not perfect, but they've already, and they have the advantage of having already been analyzed and moved a lot of data for those areas, and we recognize that there are areas outside of those boundaries where either cap or exclusion could be appropriate, or also, we also recognize that the boundaries could be modified a little bit to be more effective, but because this project was time-sensitive, we went with those boundaries. So at this point, I'd like to go into district by district, each of the areas that we're And I guess I'd request that, as we go through them, if the commission feels strongly that one of the recommendations should be changed or moved up or down, if we could get a quick straw vote on that. We have prepared 21 separate resolutions, so each one has its own reso. The idea being is if some of these feel like they're appropriate to continue to a further hearing, we can do so. Other areas where there is a real sense of urgency, for instance Falcon Lane to protect the people that are there, the commission could recommend those to the board. I do want to make it clear that it's an area-by-area set of recommendations that we're going to do, or that's our recommendation to the commission. So I had paused at this point to see if there's questions or input from the commissioners on the process.
Yeah. Okay.
If I may, through the chair, I just want to clarify that that would be after the public comment.
Correct, yes.
That we'd be taking any, what we proposed approach from district by district.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, if we have any general commissioner questions about anything, and then we could go to the public, and then after that, then we would proceed with some straw voting. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Yes, Commissioner Carr. Just one on this. On the countywide bottom line there, the 70,000 parcels is obviously fewer than the total countywide parcels. So what zoning categories does that reflect?
Those are, those do not reflect commercial, with the exception of LC, industrial, or LIA. They reflect the zoning districts where vacation rentals are currently allowed. That is an old number, though, so it includes R1, and R1 is no longer an allowed district. The point of that last line is to give people a perspective on how many single-family homes we have in this county, and how many vacation rentals we have, and just look at the number of vacation rentals to the number of single-family homes and get an overall county average for the unincorporated area. Because we are fairly sure, unless the tax records are incorrect, that that number is fairly accurate for the total number of single-family. The number of lots developed with a single-family home, I want to clarify, it's the number of lots, it isn't the number of homes.
So 41,000 parcels countywide that have single-family homes on them?
Correct.
So my recollection of the most recent census of about little under two and a half people per house, that would put a countywide unincorporated areas population of under 100,000?
That would be true if they were all single-family homes, and there was only one home in each parcel. That's not the number of homes, it's the number of residentially developed lots. For instance, you know, on Church Street in Gurnville, I think there's like 50 units on that parcel.
So, but, so it would include DA?
Correct, it would include DA.
And LIA?
It would not include LIA.
Or LEA.
It would include LEA.
And it seems like a low number to me.
Well, it may, through the chair, it may be, we have, coming up with that number is difficult to do, simply because we have so much development that happened before we adopted a building code, and the only tool that we really have that we can rationally apply from one area to another are the tax assessor use codes. So the number was developed by aggregating all the assessor use codes that indicate that property is being taxed for having residential development on it. I agree that it may or may not be accurate, but the point is, is if that's the tool that's being used to evaluate these individual areas, I'd want to use the same tool when we looked at the entire county.
Yeah. The initial reason I asked the question is because for the public, or for people that aren't intimately familiar with the subtext of not every zoning category, some of the zoning categories, it can be, it can lead to misunderstanding about what the numbers are, that there are only 1,850 vacation rentals in the entire unincorporated area could be drawn from that, which I think may not be accurate.
Well, there are 1,847 valid vacation rental permits as legal ones. Legal ones, as of last week, and that does not include the coastal zone.
Right.
Because Article 79 does not affect the coastal.
I just remember four or five years ago, the City of Petaluma commissioned a consultant out of the city to do, to basically do a total internet search, and the number of internet-advertised vacation rental homes in the City of Petaluma, compared with the number of permits, there were 19% that were permitted. So, you know, it's a subject area that I think a lot of people would benefit from having more research done. That's just a general observation.
Thank you for that perspective. I wanted to emphasize, is we had to come up with a metric that we could use consistently through this analysis.
I understand, it wasn't a critique of the staff.
I understand.
I'll get to that later.
I know. So we, so we'll go through, the areas are being presented alphabetically, so I just wanted to emphasize that, and it's not like from most important to least important, they're just organized alphabetically. It turns out that our area that is really in crisis happens to be the first one up, and that's the Falcon Lane Theodore Lane neighborhood. So prepared this introductory slide, so there'll be a slide with some statistics about the area, and then a map of the area. And we're including limited commercial in all of these, because there's a couple of areas where the limited commercial parcels are developed residentially, and the number of vacation rentals in those parcels has an effect on the overall concentration in that area. It's an allowed use, too. I mean, you can have a home and have a vacation rental in limited commercial. So this is an area in Sonoma Valley. Here's the map, and it is surrounded on three sides by an exclusion zone. That exclusion zone extends fairly far across this area of Springs, and across the street is R2, which is never allowed vacation rentals, and so this neighborhood has been the only place in the entire area where you could establish a vacation rental, and we're up to almost, we're up to over 40% of these homes have been converted.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
Are you starting to go into these areas now, or do you still have some, can I still have some general questions before you?
Sure, but.
Okay. I didn't, I know this was just an example, I didn't want to interrupt you, but.
There.
I guess I'm a little bit, I have a couple of concerns. One is sort of how this works, where you have a percent cap, and you have some of the areas are already over that cap, and you have some areas that are under the cap. How is a, how is an applicant or a potential applicant for a permit aware, how can they be aware of where that area stands? You know, if you have, if you're already open, and then some of the, some of the permits expire, or the landowner transfers, and it's no longer a legal permit, how do people know that maybe now's the chance that they can apply? So that's one question, sort of how that, how that works. How, a second question, how are various vacation rentals, legal permits that exceed the percentage cap treated with respect to the non-conforming use regulations? Are any of the existing permits would be considered non-conforming uses under the code if the number of permitted rentals exceeds the cap? That's question number two. And I'm just kind of curious, three, about why, why aren't vacant parcels counted when you're determining the percentage? I mean, I know a lot of, especially West County, and I think a couple of the areas in First District are, are, there's no way they're going to be developed, because it can't meet septic standards, or there, whatever reason is, can't be properties that backs narrow historical lots that basically can't be developed. But as these parcels develop, that changes the applicable percentage, too. So I guess I'm just curious on each of those three things, how this would work.
I'll answer the last one, then I'm going to defer to counsel at Cecily for the other two. two. You know, the last, the last one is the ratio of developed parcels to vacation rentals. The rate of development is fairly low, we certainly track that, but it's not until the building, in fact, we had a challenge coming up with a percentage for Kenwood, because the fire rebuilds happen faster than a lot of the permit history can catch up with, and the tax use codes to catch up with, because as you know, the northwest end of Kenwood got completely devastated by the Nuns' Fire, and it showed on the tax records that there were seven developed parcels, and of course, you go through there, it's, I went through and hand-counted them, that's how we got the number that's in there. But yes, it would update as parcels developed and got occupancy.
So that, that would be something that the permit department would update?
It is, it is our goal, it's our goal to move into the electronic age here, and we should, we should not only be able to, as soon as a permit gets a final, it should connect in a cellar, because we use the same permitting software for building permits as we use for vacation rentals, so it does talk to itself. The harder thing is going to be, when there's a property transfer, the recorder's office is not part of permit subpoena, and it's a separately-elected office, and so their cooperation would be voluntary, but that's been a, when a deed's recorded with a documentary transfer fee, that's what we, by the way, that's what we define as a sale, so that if you do a family trust, that's not a sale. A sale is when there's a recording fee associated with a new deed, kind of, of a property. But there's a lot of delay on that, sometimes up to a year. So that is a challenge. And the other questions?
Another question?
Oh.
To counsel?
Yeah.
How would, how would a, a legal permit, or a vacation rental, be considered conforming or non-conforming if there's a cap, where maybe there's five more legal permits than the cap would allow? So you've got theoretically five non-conforming uses and X number of conforming. How does that work?
We were just talking about that.
Sorry to bring it up.
No, it's good.
I, I think the most accurate answer is that we don't have a perfect answer for you today. I, because in the scenario you point out, which ones are the legal non-conforming uses, I don't think that we would have good grounds to treat any of them as legal non-conforming Luckily, the permits expire upon transfer of ownership, and the purpose of the legal non-conforming provision is to phase out legal non-conforming uses over time. So the vacation rental permits naturally do that, and so I think that the most conservative route would be to not treat them as legal non-conforming uses, but track ownership when they expire.
Maybe make a note for the board to make sure that, because I even see this coming up many times over the course of the, of the years.
If I may add to that, just to clarify, we have had caps as part of previous action, and at that time, we've established wait lists. Those wait lists are kept with a surplus identified, so that people, even those over the cap, come in, so if the cap is already set below what the current number is, as is often the case, that just makes that wait list effectively a bit longer if new people come in, but all the people with operating permits will be able to continue operation. And when we do pull permits off of that wait list, the first verification is to confirm that the ownership of all of those items have not changed since the initial submission that got them onto the wait list.
I guess I have one other question, maybe this is for counsel as well. The moratorium expires, whether it may ninth, or something like that, and I know the board is adamantly interested in having this in place before the, before that expires, to avoid opening the big window while, while it does take effect. How much time does the commission have if we can't finish this today, for whatever reason? How much time do we have latitude-wise to get this done at this point, at this level?
At this stage, the expected board date is April 24th. The moratorium expires on May 9th, but the ex-zone ordinances will take 30 days to go into effect. So as it stands right now, there will be a gap between the moratorium and the ex-zones going into effect, when the county would accept vacation rental permits.
So even if we finish today, there still will be a gap?
Correct.
And, and of course, that means the longer we take, the longer the gap. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Commissioner.
Yes. Follow-up question on a couple of points, right, Commissioner Carr? So property transfer is a terminating event for an existing permit, with the exception of a transfer to a trust. Are there other exceptions, for example, on a transfer triggered by death of the probate or the transfer that's affected by will and trust? Not the transfer from the current owner into their trust, but later, that issue came up in some of the letters that I previewed.
Through, through the chair, the threshold is recording a new deed that has a documentary transfer tax associated with it, and generally, those sorts of recordings do not have a tax associated, they're exempt.
Because of the stepped-up value and the, I'd like to have that, you would be familiar with this question, refine, or I'd like to really kind of be sure how that's going to work, because you've covered the transfer of property that's currently owned into a trust set up by the current owner. That's not a transfer that triggers termination, but the other stuff, you know, could be a more complicated answer.
So how I see it is if there's documentary transfer tax associated with the grant deed, then it's not being passed on to a owner occupied as a beneficiary of that trust. I'm not a lawyer, but in estate planning and scheme, that's generally what happens. And so I think where there could be a danger is, you know, they essentially transfer ownership of properties perhaps to family members, and that permit could go on indefinitely, so long as the house stayed in the family, or stayed in what would be considered like beneficiaries of their trusts. So I think that, that could set a precedence that could essentially be difficult, because that house then would forever have the vacation permit allowable. Since we're talking about this, I was hoping you could just touch upon any discussion that you might have had about creating some other kind of expiration of the permit, so essentially to allow other people in the neighborhood to get a permit at some point. So if you have a neighborhood where there's only 14 houses, and they've all lived there for their whole lives, and one person has the permit, then no one else will ever have an opportunity. So I'm just wondering if that discussion's ever, and had, if you can touch on it, please.
We have had that conversation, and I'll let counsel weigh in on, there's kind of two bins there. There's the bin of the existing entitlements, and I think in the case of those, they have to remain what they are. I mean, going forward with new entitlements is something that we could consider, but it's been made fairly clear that somebody who holds a valid zoning permit for a vacation rental has got a property entitlement, and we, we can't revoke that unless they violate the conditions of approval. And it is true that, that family members can pass the property on, and as long as there's no transfer tax, that that permit would remain valid essentially forever, and I don't, I don't think there's any way to change that with the existing permits we have. Is, I'll ask Sina to that question.
The other way to not revoke, but expire permits is through a process called amortization that's recognized in zoning law, and it requires a calculation of kind of what the investments and the profits are, and then having a certain period where those vacation rental permits would expire. So that would be the other option to kind of, to totally overhaul the current expiration, and we haven't gone through that exercise and kind of really financial process of determining what the appropriate length of time is, because people are being divested of that right that they have. So short of changing the ordinance and going through that amortization calculation, that's kind of the only way to expire the current permits.
If I could just respond to that, thank you very much for bringing that up, because I think that that's a very valid opportunity for the county to have. I don't know if right now is the appropriate time, since we are really under the gun, but I think that there, that there should be a discussion at some point about an alternative to the expiration only upon the, the transfer tax, because, you know, the idea here is that we want to keep the diversity in the neighborhood, and by allowing, what I'm afraid of is that we see one house that stays a vacation rental for such a long period of time, it's already, that housing has been taken off of the market. If the family decides they don't want a Airbnb anymore, and they don't live in it, then we just have another vacant house. And so it would be, you know, that got passed down to another family member, or if there was some kind of an amortization based on income or period of time that it wasn't rented, then that could, could be a possibility to kind of downgrade that permit. I don't know how that would work, but I, thank you for bringing that up, because I think that's a really valid opportunity for us.
I have a comment on that as well, but I think, Commissioner, I seem to remember the last time we talked about this, we were talking about a business license and renewing it, and making that a mechanism for expiring or vacation rentals. What happened with that plan that we were talking about last time?
Do you want to talk about the second first reading?
Yes, the vacation rental business license is also going back to the board on 4/24. I think what we discussed in terms of vacation rental permits expiring is that by having the annual business license, we would be checking on an annual basis whether there had been ownership turnover, which otherwise, the permitting department hasn't necessarily pinged about. So there may be some permits that have expired that haven't been, the expiration hasn't been effectuated in the system, and we anticipate that an annual business license will catch that turnover in ownership, because it also needs to be shown as part of the business license.
Is that a mechanism that can be used to expire the, the permit? The non-renewal of a business license for a cycle or two?
There, there may, as, I don't know that we have looked at this as part of the non-conforming use section, but in an ex-zone, not a cap zone, but in a, in an exclusion zone, each of those are non-conforming uses, and they aren't allowed to expand currently. And so if the lapse of a vacation rental business license means that they're not operating for a certain amount of time, then there may be an ability to revoke the permit under the non-conforming use section.
Commissioner Conover?
On the. On the question just asked, so there are two distinct things. There's the vacation rental permit, and then the operator, you have to get a business license. So the operator, that one triggers the requirement for the other. It is, is it anticipated that failure to renew the business license would be evidence of intention of abandonment of the vacation rental permit?
I think it may be, but staff would need to discuss that more.
Thank you, counsel. Certainly, it seems like if through one cycle, you didn't renew your annual license, that that would be, meet the 12-month abandonment of use criteria for a non-conforming use. Any term less than that, though, would, I think would be difficult, right now, would be difficult to interpret.
Well, I just think, especially if we're going to have circumstances where there's a waiting list, having some, you know, affirmative procedure that if somebody doesn't renew the business license, or things they don't need to, and they'll just operate because they have the other permit. You know, just to be able to fast-track termination if somebody's not complying in all ways, I think would be worth considering. I'm not, I don't have a conclusion about it today, but. The other thing, relative to the, to the transfer title that would, be an event that terminates the vacation rental permit, does the buyer of a property that has an active vacation rental permit with a business license, do they step into first position if they want to exercise a continuation of that permit on that property just purchased? Or do they, is their application subordinate to the rules of the waiting list?
In past application, transfer ownership has put them in the back of the line.
Relative to the, a waiting list and the management of a waiting list, is there, do we have much of a policy stating how that works? And let me just say, if I want to get tickets to the Rolling Stones, and I hire some kid to wait in line, is the position in line transferable or not?
It is not.
It is not.
And that's clearly in there?
It is, it is not clearly in there.
I think we might want to decide one way or the other, whether, you know, and if it's, and make it clear.
Just, just if I may, Commissioner Conover, counsel, is that something at this point in time, we can put in the license, or not? Because we haven't taken it back for the hearing yet.
You mean about how the wait lists are operated?
Correct.
I would recommend that it's a better place to get feedback from the commission, but maintain as an administrative policy.
Okay.
Yeah, it's funny to me if it's an administrative policy, but I anticipate the potential for mayhem if we don't answer as many questions in advance of them coming up without policy.
If I may, I'm taking Copey's notes here, and I think that we've heard some great suggestions for our upcoming administrative policy update for vacation rental permitting, so thank you, and we will take these into consideration.
Is there any chance, I know it's not normal that we would review an administrative measure, but where there's an administrative procedural question that has substantive influence on how we might approach a policy, is that something that would come back, at least just informationally to us?
I do believe we could bring that back for, perhaps, a planning agency informational item, however, I don't believe it would be appropriate to take formal direction.
That's fine, it'd be, thank you. If you have anything else.
Commissioner Carr?
Maybe just a follow-up on that. I mean, I'd be happy if there was an administrative policy that was packaged with this recommendation to the board, so that, so that the board has an administrative policy that deals with, you know, how this works in real life, and, and we can go ahead and hold the hearing, but I'm agreeing with Commissioner Conover that we need some discussion of enforcement, how that, how that's going to fit into the administration policy.
I just have one more question about the slide that's up here right now. We're, as a body, we're expected to give recommendations on all of these exclusion zones, or the, but also. or the, but also that it's countywide. Are we expected to, or would it be appropriate for us to give a recommendation on a countywide vacation rental recommendation?
That's, sorry, Chair McCaffrey, that's just there for reference. As you see, it's not applicable under recommendation. We're not making any recommendation whatsoever. It's something that members of the public have brought up in the past, is you have a rough idea, you know, because people are saying there's too many vacation rentals in neighborhood X, well, we need some perspective on it and like what actually is the concentration countywide. And so the purpose of this was just to provide a reference, set of reference numbers here. It is not part of the recommendation.
Okay, I just remember the last time that we discussed this, I think the whole commission talked about having a countywide cap or something, because if we look at how this works, each of these little spots that we're talking about is going to be excluded or capped, but the whole rest of the county is totally open season for vacation rentals act, right?
That is right, but point perhaps to dig a little, delve a little bit deeper into when we're talking about rightsizing these cap areas. If you make a cap area very, very large, then the areas of over-concentration will continue to over-concentrate. For extreme example is if we adopted a 4%, a 5% cap countywide, the folks in Falcon Lane wouldn't get any relief at all because the numbers are so huge there in terms of the number of parcels, that the areas that are attractive for vacation rentals would continue to get the impact of over-concentration in those neighborhoods. So you need to have a set of boundaries that, I think Supervisor Hopkins said, keeps the toothpaste from being squeezed out of the tube, that you encompass everything that you need, but not much more than that, so that you don't get activity within this bigger area that's still affecting a group of, a smaller group of properties inside the area. So really, 500 or so residential parcels in an area may represent an upper limit because when we've analyzed, we've zoomed back and just looked at the pockets of concentration, you get bigger than that and you start to get multiple pockets within the area. And once you're starting to encompass multiple pockets, then the overall, putting an overall cap isn't going to fix things. In fact, if there's a compelling reason to do it in a big area, then an exclusion zone might be a better tool. I mean, Napa County did that to their whole county.
Is there any motion towards doing something like that?
Not as part of today's action. This was specifically directed by the board to, you know, to focus on a pretty narrow issue, which is the neighborhoods that have significantly higher concentration than the countywide average. And really focus down on that issue, not on things like fire safety, although like I said, there's one exception in here.
Yeah, I just, the toothpaste tube analogy is kind of interesting. I think it's more like a balloon, you know, squeeze a balloon and it just inflates somewhere else. And so if we're squeezing these little areas, then it has the potential to just push it to areas showing these maps that are, they're still on the screen, but they're not grayed out in the map.
Well, Chair McCaffrey, part of the reason we picked some of them is, for instance, Falcon Lane is completely surrounded by an ex zone, so it's not going to squeeze anywhere. Same thing with the center of Glen Ellen. You know, Glen Ellen, it looks like these spikes coming into the center of town. Other areas are often like the areas, some of the areas we're recommending in your district are surrounded by land-intensive agriculture land where it's not allowed. Areas in the Russian River, there just isn't any development, you know, you'll see the pattern of parcelization change from 6,000 square foot lots to 600 acre grazing lands. So, we are aware of that. There are some places where it wouldn't really be an appropriate tool.
Commissioner? I was just going to say, if you're looking for some support, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of both. I think we should, I like doing these focused areas where there are over-concentrations and looking at the high-density areas and that with whether it's a cap or exclusion. But I'd be in favor of having the county look at a countywide unincorporated area cap on the number. If you, you know, look at, just as a global number, not to set aside the specific areas. I think the Hospitality Association made a good point about looking at specific areas and making sure that the context of each of those areas is considered, so.
Commissioner Conover? I agree with taking that look, very much so, because it's like other topical concerns that we take up when there's over-concentration and an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure comes to mind, that other areas that have concerns, but that aren't quote "over-concentrated" yet, the idea that we wait to do something until there is over-concentration runs a little the wrong way with me. And I don't, you know, the fact that if we quote "take care of these areas that are over-concentrated" and don't deal with countywide questions, that, for that to not invite a problem would require the assumption that there would be, you know, that we've reached equilibrium in terms of the number of vacation rental permits that the county will be receiving, which I don't think is likely to be true. And just finally then, staff, this 1,847 permitted vacation rentals, has, what's the staff's view of, how confident is the staff that that represents 100% of the vacation rentals operating in any unincorporated area?
It absolutely does not.
Do we have any idea how many there are?
That would be a question for code enforcement. They're the ones that do the web scrape and they're the ones that are doing the research into unpermitted vacation rental operations. I don't have that information with me and I wouldn't want to speculate on that.
Maybe that could be part of the...
Yes, also through...
...information that comes back at a PA meeting or...
Well, through the chair, I do want to emphasize, this is not, this is only phase one of this project and certainly Commissioner Carr's recommendation for taking a look at a countywide cap is something that we can do. We're going to be looking at evacuation and fire safety in round two. That's going to be a round that's going to involve a lot more analysis than this one. This is, this is kind of a Band-Aid fix on the areas that really have a lot of vacation rentals and areas where we've heard a lot from residents that their quality of life and their kind of expectations of quiet enjoyment of their private properties being disturbed.
Okay, so, thank you. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing.
Through the chair, I do believe staff, did you want to stop the presentation now or did you want to, there is more presentation?
There is more presentation.
There's quite a bit more presentation, however, this might be an opportunity for the commission to take general questions. The format that staff is recommending here is we look at each package of recommendations district by district and then on the specific recommendations, then open up public comment on those neighborhood-level recommendations. It's of course your prerogative on how to do this.
Commissioner? I'm in okay with that in general, I just want to make sure we recognize the fact that there are hospitality industry comments that apply across the board and not necessarily to specific areas, so I'm not sure how you want to handle that in terms of the public hearing. And if it's of any help at all and if it will move things along, I'm happy to have an open public hearing and everything and just ask the, ask the members of the public who speak to say what, if they're in a general concern behind, but if they have a, you know, comment on a specific area, I can jot it down and we can maybe get through with the public hearing earlier.
That was my thinking as well. There's so many areas that we're looking at here, to go through them and then go through public comment on each one. I think it makes sense for speakers to come up and mention, like Commissioner Carr said, if it's a general concern over vacation rentals in general or it's to a specific district, just mention that in your comments. And then after we receive all the public comment, we have all that information, then we can go on to discussing each one individually as we continue with the presentation.
Would that have Gary going through the whole report first?
Yeah, and so I guess first, Gary, if you go through kind of quickly and show us each of the, a snapshot of each of the...
Okay, yeah, I'll do a quick summary of each one with the idea that we can go back and, because some of these are a lot easier for folks to get their heads around than other ones and there's going to be a lot of questions. So, all I'm going to do is map them and give an overview of the statistics there and what the issue is and then go to the next one. So, be kind of rapid-fire, there's 21 of them.
And then I'll, after that, go over the public hearing after this.
Okay. So the first, the first one is the Falcon Lane Theodore Lane neighborhood, that's in Springs area. It's a relatively small area that's surrounded by an ex zone and it is experiencing the highest concentration of vacation rentals in the county, it's 41%. And the recommendation there is an exclusion zone, so we just harmonize the land use in that entire area. It had different zoning than the surrounding area and so apparently didn't meet the criteria when we did the ex zone in the first place, but this kind of corrects an oversight when you look at it, it should have been in there. The next one is, so, oh, yeah, right, let me go previous, I don't want to skip up the maps. So that's, that's what it looks like. There is Highway 12. There is, all these LC parcels have residential development on it and then everything else around here is either R1 or exclusion zone. So there's, there's no areas around, and back here, this is RRD and parcels get pretty big going up the mountain behind there. So that's the Falcon, that's the Theodore Lane neighborhood. Gates Road is the next, is the next one in First District. And these letters, by the way, are for reference when we look at all of the resolutions, they're just done in order alphabetically, so you're going to see that letter jump around because I've arranged it by supervisory district, so don't, it's not a typo really, it's I M G. Gates Road was recommended by the battalion chief of Stone County Fire and the neighbors out there. It's an unusual situation that it's in an extreme fire severity, it's in the highest fire severity rating the county fire has. It's a one-way dirt road and for some reason, the Haney Fire, the Tubbs Fire, and whatever the last one was, it all burned around it but never burned over it. But evacuated, the access is very poor here, so this is recommend, this is the only one that's being recommended on the basis of fire hazard issue, although there's a fair, you know, it's a 13% concentration in an area that's difficult to evacuate. This would be something, an example, something we may bring back. This is part of this phase, but this is type analysis we're going to do for phase two for other areas. And this is what it looks like. This is Calistoga Road over here, so it just goes east of Calistoga Road. And the road kind of dead ends up in the hills. There's also, it rises almost 1,000 feet from Calistoga Road to the back part here, it's very, very hilly. Glen Ellen, the exclusion area we're recommending here is the center of Glen Ellen, which while zone limited commercial, is an extension of a residential neighborhood. There is, the residential neighborhood doesn't stop at the zoning district, it's been there a lot longer than the zoning district. So it's a pretty high concentration, it's a small number of parcels and every area around here, around central Glen Ellen, is already in an exclusion zone. So this is literally just filling, this is filling, this is a classic example of filling in a donut hole that was in a previous exclusion zone. Hughes Chicken Colony, that's actually the name of the subdivision, it's next to the Shellville Chicken Colony in Shellville. This was by request from First District Office. It's an area far down the south part of the county that has fairly high concentration and the concern there was how it affects neighborhood character with 16.7% of the homes being used as vacation rentals. It's south of 121 and Ramel Road, it's kind of in that southwest corner of the intersection. There's Highway 121 up here and here's Ramel over here, but way in the south part of the county. In Kenwood, we have the northwest end of Kenwood that burned in the Nuns Fire was, is zoned rural residential even though it's in the urban service area. And this area is filled in quickly with vacation rentals once our limitation on re-establishing vacation rentals went away. The 40 parcels that are developed there, the reason there's a star is, the rebuilds are happening fast enough that the tax records are not keeping up with it, so that's, this is one that's not based on a Cessar notes, it's based on just going and counting how many houses appeared to either be ready for occupancy or are occupied. The rest of Kenwood is in R1 or an exclusion zone, so once again, it wouldn't be squeezing the balloon where Ken, the, the essential business, the center of Kenwood is down here. And so this is the area just up to the northwest of Kenwood is what we're talking about. Palmer Harrington is, is an area that is south, southwest of the city of Sonoma and this, this is squeezing the balloon. And we're seeing this happen a lot around the city of Sonoma because, as you know, the city has banned vacation rentals and the areas right adjacent to the city have really seen a growth in the concentration of vacation rentals. Basically, the closer you are to the city line, the more desirable the property appears to be as a vacation rental. We're probably going to come back and take a holistic look at the entire boundary around all the cities in Stone County that prohibit vacation rentals and just see if we see similar patterns, but this was brought to the First District Supervisor's attention by the residents. So it's a relatively small areas, it's $65 parcels and it's a pear on either side of Lebroni. And this is, the concentration is highest down here in the south, but once again, if we, we, staff felt it's good to exclude both of these areas. This area is experiencing growth in vacation rentals. If we just prohibited it in this area, it's likely, it's not going to stop growing here. The Crosshatch is the area that's inside the city of Sonoma. Walbrew Heights is a small residential development off Snow Mountain Road. It is served by a private road that at least nine of them was between nine and 10 feet wide. It doesn't seem to meet any known standards for emergency access and that's what the residents had brought up, is access is very limited here. It only has two vacation rentals and this is an example of where, of putting a cap on here would be kind of crazy because it would just oscillate between, you know, if there's a 10% cap, it oscillate between two and three rentals and if there's a 5% cap, between one and two. And it's a, it's an outlier at most larger parcels. Everything around it is RRD 160 and it's, it's pretty big parcels. So, once again, this area, sorry.
Can I ask a question? So it says 174 parcels, that map looks like it's got about 30 parcels.
Wait, hang on. Did I do a typo on this one? I could have.
Anyway, just pointing that out. The map is what we're going by, not the...
Yeah, I know.
Not the number.
Well, actually, what everyone should go by is the table that's attached to each resolution because that's the...
I knew you were going to pull something like that.
Well, I mean, that's, when you're recommending something, that's what will be recommended.
Okay, just making sure it's...
Let me just see. No, it says 39 parcels.
Okay, thank you.
There are, and 17 developed parcels, that's...
Thanks.
Okay. So that's it for the First District resigning. Moving on to the Fourth District, we do have an interesting situation and I'm going to cover a little bit more depth at Fitch Mountain, but the first, so in Fitch Mountain, this... area's been under an exclusion zone since we, it was part of the original area that had an exclusion zone. And there's quite a few parcels in this area. That community has been very active in getting together, meeting with property owners on both sides of the issue. Property owners that have vacation rentals and want to expand them, and people who don't like them. And it was, and their community survey is attached as, as, as an exit, as an attachment to staff report. And the interesting thing is, they asked the Fourth District Office to change the exclusion zone to a 10% cap, so this is at the request of, of the community. And I think it's an example, too, in how this, these things can change depending on really how, how these land uses are affecting the community. In this case, the community seemed to feel that a mix of vacation rentals and full-time homes represented kind of their vision for their neighborhood. So, the recommendation here would be to remove the exclusion zone and replace it with a 10% cap. They're currently only at 8%, so it would allow a few more vacation rentals. And most of the properties are zoned rural residential, there's a few RRD parcels at the top of the mountain. The other recommendation was to include everything between the Russian River and the city of Heelsburg before the original exzone, kind of looked like an arc going around like this, and didn't include this area in its center. So, the recommendation is to switch it to a 10% cap and include all the parcels between the city of Heelsburg and the Russian River. Chiquita Road is--
Okay, I have a question.
Sorry.
So, would you go back to Fitch Mountain, please?
Right.
The numbers. So, the 8.1% is a figure that relates to the 332 developed parcels?
Correct.
And are most of the remaining parcels pretty much undevelopable? This, is this unsued or not?
It's, it is not unsued, and undevelopable is, is always an interesting concept, because it depends on economic demand, and that really fits into this area, it's just outside of the Heels, of Heelsburg, in an area where you could sell, where home prices are very high, and installing a $100,000 septic system in the 1980s would've made it unbuildable, but it might be a good economic investment in 2023. So, it's, it's, they're, they're challenged by small parcel sizes, they have a water system, so they don't have to worry about that, but developing a septic system there is very challenging.
So, at, let's assume that some number of the 732 total, or about 400 more parcels, began developing. Does that, that 10% as a raw number continues to increase? Is there an intention for the 10% as currently interpreted by the 332 to be a cap, or a number that is a flex number that goes up in terms of number of vacation rental units as the development--
Through the chair, the number goes up as the number of parcels goes up.
At what point, given that answer, would evacuation become an overriding concern versus the stated 10%?
To, to be clear, I mean, look at what we're, what we're doing right now is reconsidering an initial zoning, that development is gonna be looked at under, you know, with regard to evacuation, with regard to fire safety, with regard to parking, you know, with regard to all the considerations that are ordinarily part of development, and it wouldn't be unreasonable then to come back and say, maybe this should go down to a 5% cap.
So, when it went from exclusion, which was the original staff position, to 10%, was, was there a calculation testing the 10% based on evacuation circumstances? Because it's a fairly problematic evacuation area in some sense.
Just through the chair, exclusion was not on the table when the exclusion zone, Article 79 didn't have those provisions in it. All we could do is an exclusion zone, so that wasn't, it wasn't a consideration in the initial zoning.
So, so let me just rephrase the question. How, how much of a priority, take it out of the question of Fitch Mountain, how much of a priority is evacuation as it factors into this policy arena? Is there, is there a point where evacuation becomes the determining concern?
Yes, and it could be the reason that we would go to an exclusion zone, even not change the percentage.
So, what, how do you, how do you, what's the analytical process, quantitative analysis of the evacuation issue applied to a particular area? How does that work?
We haven't developed that methodology, that's for Phase Two. I mean, that's, so I said, the second phase is going to take a while to do, because we will develop those standards and that analysis.
So, that standard, once it's developed, might undermine a preliminary conclusion that 10% works in this context?
Indeed, it could also, it's, you know, we're, we're asking for a recommendation from the Commission. The Commission could recommend to the Board do a 5% cap instead of a 10% cap here.
And the reason I'm asking isn't folks on Fitch Mountain, it just looks a whole lot like a lot of the Fifth District areas as well, so.
Correct. It, it, it is, it is a big concern, it was just beyond the scope of this initial rezoning effort.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, I'm, sorry. Through the chair, just to remind the Commission, this is part of why there are 21 resolutions, so if there are areas that are best to hold off on any action related, then it's gonna be part of, I'm sure, the ending discussion.
Commissioner.
Thanks, just a follow-up on the evacuation zone. Could you clarify for me the, practically the same if a house was occupied with four people on a regular basis as homeowners versus occupied on a periodic basis with four people as a vacation rental? What is the difference in the evacuation procedure, and is it mostly based on the fact that these are people who most likely don't live there and don't have familiarity with evacuating? Or what is the purpose of making evacuation a limiting factor?
It's, it's twofold. First of all, the maximum capacity could be 12 people, so there can be significantly more people in the house than your average family. And the second one is that we do have people that are not only from out of the area, they may be from an area that really doesn't experience disasters like we do, and not understanding kind of the grave nature of it. And it's, it's why we added into the license ordinance that it's mandatory that these properties be evacuated when there is an evacuation warning, not when there's a, so we want these places to be evacuated before the actual mandatory evacuation takes place, because on Fitch Mountain, like in Montegoal, like, like in, you know, areas outside of Guernville, it just takes one person, get in their car, kind of crossed up on a street, and nobody's gonna be able to get out of that neighborhood. So, it is a big life safety issue. Thanks, Eric. Okay, next area, Chiquita Road. It's a great name for a road. This is, Chiquita Road is, sits west of the city of Heelsburg, is between 101 and Heelsburg Airport. This is an area that is just experiencing, like the areas around the city of Sonoma, an increasing concentration, because Heelsburg doesn't allow vacation rentals, and this is a pretty desirable place if, if you, you know, want to market as having a, having a Heelsburg area. But we've seen a lot of growth in this area, and also its companion area on Dry Creek that's coming up, I think in the next slide, Norton Road, which we're also proposing for five, these, by the way, we're proposing caps, 5% caps in these areas. They're relatively flat and have good access, so the evacuation concern, it doesn't really exist here. But the concentration, for instance, in Norton's 15.5%, so it's five times the county average. And this is where, so this is situated just up, up above here is where Chiquita is up above this, and this kind of brackets Chiquita down at the south side of Heelsburg, west of Highway 101 at the intersection. This is Dry Creek Road coming in here, just to situate everyone for where this is located. The Fifth District is our longest list, and where we actually right now have our largest concentration of vacation rentals. So, the, and, and there are some recommendations here that may take a little, a little more explaining than the other ones. So, the first one is Armstrong Woods Road, and the boundary here could have been improved, but we felt that we needed to stick with our original recommended boundaries from the 2020 urgency ordinance. The 2020 urgency ordinance is where these boundaries in the lower Russian River were first mapped. So, in Armstrong, the thing, this is the first one of these examples I'm bringing to the Commission, where there's a significant number of R1 parcels in this area, and you have to view the R1 as a de facto exzone, because it doesn't allow any more vacation rentals. So, the south side over here, the south, the south end of this neighborhood is R1, and the north end is RR. And you can see, it's, it's fairly contained here. This is down below Laughlin Road, this is all, south of here is all R1, so there's no potential for vacation rentals to be permitted south of here. And staff felt to just harmonize the restriction through the whole neighborhood and recommend this as an exclusion zone rather than as a 5% cap area. This one was, I guess, the most on the edge. Call the other examples we have of this, it's, the, the non-R1 parcels are a tiny percentage, and it's pretty clear that we'd create a Falcon Lane-type situation. So, in Austin Creek, this is the area from the Russian River almost up to the town of Casadero. The recommendation's a 5% cap. There's 329 residentially developed parcels, 47 known active legal vacation rentals going on there, and which gives us a concentration of 14.3%, it's a relatively high concentration. And there, there also is an aspect of evacuation involved here, because there's, there's only two roads in and out. There's Austin Creek Road on one side of Austin Creek and Kaz Highway on the other side, and it's a long, skinny configuration. So, you know, you, you get up to the far end near, near the town of Casadero, which is further up here, and I don't know whether using Cambridge Road is, is a good evacuation route, but anyhow, this is, this is where we're recommending. And, and up here, this private community up here was not part of the original boundary, so we didn't adjust the boundary here, but it might be an area to consider in the future. There aren't any vacation rentals in that, in that area. Actually, most of it's undeveloped at this point. Drake Road was part of the cap area, and it, and it was a, it was like, it was two disconnected parts, because there was a piece of vineyard in the middle, it was LIA. And of the 352 parcels, most of them are zoned R1, so this is an example of an area where we only have 24 parcels out of 352, where you could even have a vacation rental in the future because of the prohibition in R1. So, we're recommending an exclusion zone on the remaining handful of parcels. The, the Drake Road area in the original map went from here up to the top of the map, and this area here is RRD, this is RRD, and this is AR over here.
Is that, is that AR area? Is that, is that Glen, Glen Lane?
It may be.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Just looking on Google, I couldn't quite, couldn't see a, a road in there, just wanted to confirm that sort of--
It, it is peculiar, because it's all inside of the urban service area, so it's, it's unknown why this land, it's unknown why it isn't R1, because it has all the same access to, to utilities. This is the largest area that we're proposing for rezoning, which is Guernwood and Montegoal, and this has the same, same concern as, as Drake Road, that the majority of the parcels are R1, and then there's a handful of parcels that are AR2 way up, and, and they're the dead-end road, so when you, the, these are really a concern, because there's no way out of here. This is, this road, it comes off of Old Kaz Road, and then just dead-ends up here in the Montegoal, Montegoal neighborhood. There's also a couple of patches here, is the best way to think of it, of RRD zoned parcels that once again are within the urban service area. It's unknown why they're zoned that way, but vacation rentals in, in this bigger area, all these parcels in here are all R1, so this would have a tendency to force any demand for vacation rentals in this area into these remaining neighborhoods. And, and at this point, I do remember one thing that I wanted to cover is in the Fifth District, we're not including in our recommendation town of Guernville, Rianito, or Vacation Beach. And the reason for that is Rianito and Vacation Beach are 100% R1 already, so there's no, there's no possib, it, it didn't make any sense to rezon something where they're not allowed. And in Guernville, we did get Board direction to come back with a combining district to kind of help balance the need for visitor-serving hospitality and lodging with the local tourism economy, and thought it was best, because most of, most of Guernville's R1 anyway, but there is a fair piece on Fourth Street of single-family development unlimited commercial property. But we're leaving it off this, because we'd like to revisit Guernville when we develop the resort area combined district. So, those three are not part of the recommendation, Rianito, Guernville, and Vacation Beach.
Commissioner, go ahead. So, do you have a question? Gary, would you scroll back to the Jerry Grode map, please? The area that you were discussing that is a one-off area, that is unclear why it would be there, makes me think of the mapping error that was discovered in Freestone. When something like that comes up, do you look at that and see whether or not there's, is this map wrong?
We do, and we will. It was, once again, there was kind of a time urgency--
Yeah, that's fine.
--to this.
It doesn't footnote--
Yeah, and, and we always, because, actually personally, I'm always curious, how did this happen? Because it doesn't make any sense. And I was around when we did GP 2020, so I know where the files are, but it's, it's a lot of work to go through those old files. But yeah, it's something we had to investigate, because potentially we could just bring it back as a technical correction, if it turns out it was just a map error.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Hacienda, so now we're getting into the Forestville area, and this is, my apologies to any people from Hacienda that are here, I know this doesn't match your community boundaries, but we called it Hacienda. As, as a resident of one of those towns in West County, I'm acutely aware of how important it is to use the right name for your town. But there's 253 parcels with single-family dwellings, 21 vacation rentals, so that gives us a low concentration of 8.3%. The recommendation, though, is to, is to do a 5% cap, and we're not rezoning the C1 parcels or the public facility parcels, because once again, vacation rentals are not allowed in those zoning districts. So, the rezone would only be 388 parcels, not all parcels in this area.
Commissioner, go ahead. Gary, this is a good opportunity to raise, or to make the observation. So, 8.1, 8.3, 8.1, 8.3. Do we look at the concentration and include as a kind of a secondary analysis point? If in the entire area you show here, it's only 8.3%, 21, but if, say, nine of them occurred on one street, how does that factor in?
That's always been a challenge here, and it doesn't, because the tool that ended up not being part of-- because the tool that ended up not being part of the ordinance, which was a limit on proximity, just isn't in our code.
The question, the proximity issue, I think, is something we're looking at.
Correct. We would need that tool in our toolbox.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and there's our poorly mapped map of Hacienda. Here's where a road, the Russian River, is coming around through here. And then there's our, the commercial area and the park area. That's actually two parcels over there. Oh, there's a parcel over there, too, that's also... Those are two PFs over there, but most of it is residential. Monte Rio, and Monte Rio, we're talking about, how the area of Monte Rio down at the flats, we're not, we're dealing... When we did the initial cap, we felt dealing with Sterret Hill, AKA the terraces, and Villa Grande as separate from the flat part of Monte Rio. Anyone who knows which part this is, because there's good access in the flat part of Monte Rio. Relatively good access, I should say. In this area, we have a group of 57 R1 parcels that are left over from the wastewater project that ended up not happening, and 20 limited commercial parcels also, which have varying degrees of residential development. So we have 248 parcels with residential development and 30 permits there. So that gives us a 12% concentration in this area here. We're not including this chunk in the middle, which is the part of Monte Rio that's zoned R1 because vacation rentals are already prohibited in that area.
Scroll back to the number page, please. Thank you.
So on Neely Road, we're recommending an exclusion for the portion of Neely Road down by the wastewater plant. This is another one of those outlier areas that most of Neely is R1, except for the very end. And there's also the concern about evacuation there, too, because it dead ends at the wastewater plant, and there's no other way out except driving all the way back to Gurnville if Summer Bridge is not in. Although the Summer Bridge is usually in there during fire season. So the plan there is to rezone in 96, sorry, that, yeah, 96, because we're excluding the R1 parcels.
Commissioner, if you have any other questions. You should say, not everyone would recognize from the map that there's a river in there.
That's true. In fact, what's interesting here is many of these parcels are completely underwater. These, I mean, not just right now, not, I mean, there's a lot more underwater today. But even in the summer, some of these people are swimming over top of them, the Summer Bridge goes in. So it is kind of interesting, some of these old boundaries that probably go into public trust lands, but that's for another day. But this is the area down, there's the wastewater plant here. So it's the very end of Neely Road that's being proposed for an ex zone to conform with prohibition on vacation rentals in the rest of Neely Road. And while vacation beach sits in the middle. So the entire length of Neely from here all the way back to the town of Gurnville, there's a prohibition on vacation rentals already because it's based on. Northwood, which surrounds the best nine-hole golf course in the county, is 165 parcels, and 111 of them have single-family homes. And I was actually surprised, too, by this calculation, because I go through there every day, that the average parcel size is only a third of an acre. I thought it was bigger, but that's what the math tells us here. And everything there is on rural residential 1-acre density. So this is, the golf course is here, and this is just the arc around the golf course. Rio Del, back up in Forestville. This is the only area that we looked at that didn't hit the 4.5% equivalency to the county. And staff is adding this in here because they're feeling this is adjacent to Hacienda. If we only put a cap on Hacienda, it's just going to push vacation rentals over here. It's close to 5% anyway. Of course, this would be, you know, a policy decision for your commission. But we're including this in our recommendation. And we're recommending rezoning all the parcels except for the single C1 parcel that's in Rio Del. And this is, there's River Road. The invisible river is out here somewhere. And this area, by the way, is quite healing to compare to some of the other areas. Summer Home Park has got some hills in it, but they're small. Okay, we're getting, you can tell we're getting near the end of the list here. Summer Home Park has 119 residentially developed parcels. It's got nine vacation rental permits, relatively low concentration, and all the zoning there is all AR5 for the entire area. And in this, once again, we didn't include these undeveloped parcels uphill because they were not included in the 2020 analysis. There's no, there isn't another reason why they're not included, but we wanted to keep the boundaries similar to what was, well, that was the direction we received, to keep them similar to what was already studied, the rivers down here. And the terraces, Sterret Hill and Villa Grande, is another very large area. It's got 362 parcels with single-family dwellings and quite a few vacation rental permits, and probably some of the most challenging access and limited on-street parking of any area in the county. And the concentration is already up to 13% there. We're recommending a 5% cap. We may come back with a recommendation for an exclusion at some point in the future, but this is, this is the direction from the 5th District, is to do 5%, recommend 5% everywhere. We're recommending rezoning the limited commercial parcels because they have single-family homes on them. And everything else in this area is rural residential 1-acre density. So this is, this is the area. It goes from partly down Moscow Road all the way back to where Main Street and Bohemian Highway come together or go over. There's the Monte Rio Bridge. Russian River comes up around here. Highway 116 is over here on the other side, just to orient everybody.
And as a footnote, so no one misinterprets it, Moscow Road is not a potential evacuation route at the moment. Hasn't been for quite a while, and...
It's less of one now than it was.
When that will, it fell into the river.
In two places at this point.
Thank you.
And we didn't, okay, good try. I missed the Waldrew Heights map. Oh, no, that's in the beginning. Okay, so that is it. I'm sorry. I got lost at the end.
Mr. Chairman, either I just misread a lot of the resolutions with the exhibits in the zoning. I looked through all those and wrote down the zoning, and I'm finding as you, your presentation sometimes have a different zoning than I thought I read in the thing. I'm just saying, take a double check your ordinance with the exhibit numbers in the existing and future base zone.
We absolutely would do that.
Because I think there's some differences there. It could just be me not reading very well, but I think there might be some differences.
No, through the chair, it might, I mean, it reflects our, the map reflects the intent. But we had this problem when we did the urgency ordinance in a hurry is we had a list that didn't match the map, and the list prevails. So at this point, it's a recommendation to the board, but staff will studiously check.
Don't want to have to redo the ordinance, so.
No, we don't. No, we don't. So anyhow, our recommendation is that the commission find the project exempt from CEQA and approve all or some of the resolutions before you. And as an alternative recommendation, the commission could consider adjusting the recommended cap or exclusion zones upwards or downwards. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any additional questions from the commission.
I'm not seeing any additional questions from the commission. However, we've been up here for an hour and three quarters. I think it's probably a good idea to take a five-minute break, and then when we come back, we'll get right into the public area. So let's say 250.
Don't say it. 1885?
1885, yeah, that's why I'm so scared. All the way back to 1979 in the year of...
How can you miss me when I won't go away?
God, I need a warranty job, please. You know, your skeleton wears out. I couldn't believe it was you, man. I was so blown away.
Oh, we're planning for this. I had to, I had to grab it from the recycling bin. I should just have one name. I'm going to check on if there's needs anymore cards and stuff. Right, and like you miss the trip, but then you also have a home. Like, no, why don't you go out of town as a kid? I don't think he's going to care. Not only they cleared it before we come here, so I thought it was over the circle still here, but this week's there is exclusively. Maybe there was a chance, but nobody told me. I was like, oh, sweet. Who was asking? Commissioner. I think we have like the staff one, the one that Josh was showing the other day. I had to click out early. Oh, oh, um, you know, the best person to ask is Patrick. I was, I was looking for him, but I don't see him in here.
Yeah, I think he went back after he dropped off.
Yeah, yeah, I would definitely say.
He seems to know, like, just those new things.
Yeah, I, I mean, no, I think he is a master of love. Let me see if, there's a picture there. Look, there is a picture. Actually, Patrick want to bring over a picture of water that's in the fridge? It's white and...
Okay, so back from break. 252, and at this point, I would like to open the public hearing. So what I'm going to do is call out someone's name who has filled out a speeder card, and fill out a speeder card if you have it. And then I'll call the next person also in line so that we can, we have a lot of speeders today. So we get through, it's a two-minute speaking time. There's a stoplight over there that gives a little bit of warning when we get closer to two minutes. So first, we have Martine Penya. And after that, we'll have George Gergen. Good morning, hi.
Hi, Martine.
You're next.
I'm next. Sorry, Martine.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I wanted to express my enthusiastic and passionate support for the Kenwood part of the resolution. I think the final decision is... I think the planning commission, the staff has done a great job with this. I just wanted to note that the Kenwood area, the changes I think are long overdue. We live on the northwest side of Kenwood, which was burned in the twenty-seventeen fire. Majority of the houses were destroyed or severely damaged. Many residents were displaced for several years. Five years later, we're still dealing with the aftermath of the fire, with vacant lots, houses still under construction, noise, traffic, et cetera, associated with that. So the roads recovery has been long and difficult. While dealing with fire recovery, the neighborhood has also had to deal with influx of vacation rentals due to the fact that we weren't included in the exclusion zone for the rest of Kenwood. So we have overconcentration. What has happened is that the new houses that have been built, especially after the fire, have been targeted for its luxury vacation rentals. Many of them charging close to a thousand dollars per night, including fees and taxes. And many of these tourists, because they're paying so much, feel entitled to use the property as they want without regard for the residential nature of the neighborhood or the regulations. So this has caused conflict between the residents and tourists. So that's sort of the personal part of this. I just wanna reinforce again the great work that the staff did on this. I think, wanna reinforce that seventeen point five percent of the parcels are now currently vacation rentals compared to the four point five percent average for the state. This loss has, this has resulted in loss of housing stock and also affected things like Kenwood School where there's no longer permanent residents sending kids there. I also wanted to note that I saw on the website that in terms of the current moratorium.
Marty, could you wrap it up? There are times.
Sure, yeah, in terms of the current moratorium, that any applications that were submitted before that will be considered under the old rules. Based on lack of enforcement from Sonoma permits, I still think there's a lot of room for improvement there. We'd like to have that moratorium extended if that rule is actually in place. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. So after George Erdman, I'll have Cyril Penn.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having us and hearing us out. Gary, could you put Chiquita up when it's functional? I'd like to see the percentage map and stuff like that. Rapidly throw up the, the map itself. What are the challenges? Again, staff's done a great job. I've worked with Gary when I worked for the Air Push Control Districts in the north. And they've done a good job. They've got some challenges, definitely. I think that the aspect of the waiting list, I don't think that's insurmountable whatsoever. Excuse me. One of the things that's an issue for us still is fire hazard. All of the roads on Chiquita that lead off to the west are single-lane and they don't join up with another side of it. So that is definitely one thing to consider there. Our proximity to Healdsburg has made it an absolutely desirable area. A house next to us sold recently for two point eight million dollars. And that gentleman's house closed on the Friday. And on the Monday that was last available for him to be able to file prior to the moratorium going into effect, he slipped his permit in. So this aspect of the cap not going into place between the end of the moratorium and the cap where people could potentially do it, that's still an exposure for us. Desirability on this, the bubble, it's being pushed. Healdsburg's a desirable place to go. I'd like to see the Chiquita Road parcel adopted at the five percent mark. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So after Cyril Penn, we'll have Apple Wong.
Hi, I live in the Shelville Chicken Colony. And I did, I did not know until Monday that this was going on. And I don't think other folks in my neighborhood knew.
I'm having Charlie hear you.
The comments and, and I, I don't know that you guys have had a chance to see them. I think, I don't think Shelville should have been included in this. I, I, I don't think fires an issue, or parking or noise. But I just wanna talk about the character of, of the neighborhood. Cause I've lived there twenty years and I raised my kids there. And I know the concern is keeping, you know, the neighborhood character in a lot of places. And we're, we're very spread out and don't see each other. The, the families that I know that are middle class like me, I applied, I qualify for the middle class income tax credit. So I guess it's official. Those, those folks, they are gonna view their houses on weekends so that they can afford to live there. I have not, I, I've, I've been working on a remodel in addition to my house that I've lived in twenty years. It was basically a tear down when I moved into it. And I've spent my life savings on it. And just got the hundred thousand dollar set system done. And I didn't get my permit done because I didn't set it. And so my personal situation is that, you know, I'm almost ready to retire. I have a mortgage. If this goes through and I can't Airbnb my home, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sell by the link. And the people that, you know, I've been buying in our neighborhood, they, they don't live there anyway. You know, what, that, that ship sailed. I mean, other than the people that are able to hang on because they're Airbnbing their houses. And I know, and also there are nine, nine Airbnb's. I pretty much know all of those folks. They actually don't Airbnb. They, they don't do it like a business. There's one out of those nine that does it like it's a business that, you know, it's all its fault. These are people that actually live in homes, but live in homes for a while. So thanks for considering that. I hope you all vote on this today.
Thank you. After Apple Wong, I'll have Lori Levy somewhere.
Thank you, everybody. I'm David Apple down in here from Lower Palmer, which as you guys already pointed out, is truly the bottom end of the balloon. Coming from Sonoma, we have a forty percent short-term vacation rentals on our street alone. Out of fifteen properties, six of them are Airbnbs. Two of them that, above my property, are full-time, owned by out-of-state individuals that are running at pretty much a hundred percent of occupancy from spring through the fall. We deal with close to thirty-eight strangers every week because it's three ships of people coming in every week. And really what this is about is this is residential areas. This is not a commercial zone. These houses were built for six-person occupancy. And we have twelve people cycling through every two days, every three days. Another twelve, another party. The level of water usage we know is much higher than if it was simply a residential, you know, occupant living there full-time. Combined with the fact that it's constant parks, parking on the street, loud noise. The patio from the hundred percent Airbnb next door is twelve feet from my bedroom window. My wife is dealing with cancer right now. And to have that kind of noise and distraction has just been horrendous. So again, I thank you for your attention to this. I appreciate you voting pro for Palmer. And thank you again. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. After Lori, we'll have Shelley Aerosmith.
Hi, I'm out of my glasses, so I have to read my letter. I am a host, but I also live on Moscow Road, so you can feel sorry for me. So I'm married as a permanent resident and a vacation homeowner in the lower Russian River. I think it's important to reach out to our representatives, let them know our concerns and experiences. Often it's complaints and disagreements that are noted. And then the resulting benefits, improvements, and progress get disregarded. So I believe this is in the case regarding vacation rentals. I live in Monte Rio. There's a little sign when you enter, welcome to Monte Rio Vacation Wonderland. When you exit, it says Monte Rio, await your return. Historically, Monte Rio, the Russian River's been vacation destination for families for over a hundred years. Vacation homes are affordable options for families to get away compared to the cost of an Airbnb rental for a four- or five-person family to a hotel room. Plus, many vacation rentals welcome pets and children at no extra costs, which I do. I encourage people to bring their pets. The renters coming into our area spend money eating at the restaurants, shopping at the stores, visiting the wireys, the parks, the beaches, spas. Many of these places rely on the season to operate their businesses year-round. As we know, some of these places don't even open for the winter. They don't even open till the tourists get there. Personally, I know my neighbors at my rental, they've never complained. I've been renting since twenty fifteen. I'm also on call for three other vacation rentals. I'm certified as part of my monthly income since retiring from spa work from COVID. And I also note that I know all of the neighbors at the other rentals. I've never had a complaint from any neighbor. And then I just want to remind you that we pay a twelve percent top tax. We also pay another fee. And vacation rentals and owners contribute a great deal to the community. It seems short-sighted band-aid for the desperate housing situation that we have here, which has just been exacerbated by the flood and the fire. And let's face it, outdated requirements from the planning department. So I just urge you to really take a good look at the situation and not take any rash actions. I have a few seconds, so I just wanna say a lot of the complaints usually come from illegal vacation rentals that are not permitted. Earlier, somebody mentioned something.
Your time is up.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thanks for doing us money for Moscow Road.
Hi, my name is Shelley Aerosmith. I live in the Hughes Chicken Colony. I've lived there for thirty years. In my short block of Acacia Avenue, there are five vacation rental permits in thirteen parcels of homes. That's an overconcentration of forty-five percent in my block. It's becoming a business district and an AR zone. The living should be easy in a rural residential area, but it's not. We in the Hughes Chicken Colony are indeed over-concentrated. Please recommend approval for the five percent exclusion zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Rosenthal. And after Mark, I'm Robert Holby. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mark Rosenthal. And I'm representing a homeowner on Casadero Highway. Basically, my mom bought this place on Casadero Highway in the seventies. So we had, kinda grew up there as kids playing around, had a lot of fun. And as time went on, she started renting it out to monthly, monthly renters, you know, month to month. And often with problems. And, you know, I would help fix things when they broke and things like that. But more importantly, like, it got to a point where the last renter that was, that was in the house was vetted by a company, a rental company. I'm not gonna name any names, I don't know, you know. But they ended up, you know, being one of those people that just had a lot of parties and just basically destroyed the place with dogs, tore up the carpets. I mean, had to go through the eviction process with them. And it was a disaster, you know. And this was like the worst one of all the tests we've had. Now, the area that I'm in is, I mean, the structure to itself is built in nineteen sixty-one. And the walls are pretty thin. It's two bedrooms, but it's very small. It's not really ideal for, for any like large group of people to be in, you know. So since we, since my mom, since this disaster happened, I went in and fixed the place again. Redid all the floors, et cetera. My mom started Airbnbing the place. We had wonderful tenants. I'm trying to finish, but, you know, and then it turned out she didn't get the right permit. We got slapped with a fine. Now, you know, we're in limbo and like, basically, we have to try to get the permit in May if we can. I'm managing the place now. She's in her upper eighties. And so the tests that we had during Airbnb's part, which was for about a year, were great. That, you know, we could go in afterwards, make sure everything was fine, et cetera, et cetera. And they never caused any harm to the place, which is my main concern now. And honestly, now that I'm managing the place, I could never go back to a month of months rental there. It just, after what's happened, I couldn't do it. I mean, I'd rather, I mean, I'd have to maybe sell the place, but I just, I hope that doesn't happen. I really hope we can get a permit to keep this income coming. Cause basically the money goes to my mom. And I just basically, I'm not gonna manage this.
Time's up, sorry.
Thank you.
So after Robert Holby, we'll have Bree Sart. A question from Gary. Well, thanks. We have speakers come up. Gary, the last speaker, what area was he in?
Through the chair, that is the Austin Creek area.
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for letting me speak again. And just to clarify, is this presentation available that you can, that people can see at someplace? One of the literature with the different regions and the recommendations?
Yes, correct. It will be posted on the planning commission website. It's a public document.
Okay, great. So, and that'll be sometime soon published? I, I hope as soon as I get out of this room. But I still have the process issue, which, you know, I'd like to know the recommendations before they're adopted. And, and how that process. I'm, as I said earlier, from Monte Rio to Northwood. Almost half of my neighborhood is vacant second homes. Right, so that's not a statistic in any of the, any of the presentations that I saw. But it's a huge impact on the character of the property. I myself bought the home because it was a way for me to supplement my income during retirement. The zoning changes have an impact on that. They have an impact on the property values of all the homes that you're rezoning. And I may have to go back to work and take a job and sell my house to live someplace else if the, if the plans have impacts on the character of the neighborhood that decrease the rentability of my ability to bring in second home income. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, I'm, I didn't hear his address. He's in Monte Rio.
Northwood.
North? Northwood.
Yeah.
Okay. Please be clear with where you're talking about so we can track it on the map.
Thank you.
So after Bree Sart, we'll have Sharon Davis. Welcome.
Hi, Bree Sartay. I forget my first name right.
Sorry, I did that.
You asked me wrong. Well, they don't even do that at Starbucks, so I appreciate that. I'm a Sonoma County native and business owner in Petaluma. And the property I'm speaking about is in the Armstrong Woods area. It's been our family vacation home for over fifteen years. And it's an area our family has retreated to for fifty years. We're trying to keep the home, the family, but we need the vacation rental income to do so. As our partners with my father in this business. If these restrictions go into effect, the X zoning, we will lose our family home. I really, I really value the board's efforts to create more housing. But I believe there are better areas in the county for housing and better areas for vacationing, as some of the other speakers have mentioned. Please consider removing Armstrong Woods from the X zoning. And I'd also think it should be considered as part of the resort area, combining district potentially. I believe this area was mischaracterized as being comparable with the Falcon area. That was the first area that was described as being next to an R1 zoning. This part of Gurnville is only at eleven percent after a hundred years. So it really has reached its stable point and doesn't need this overlay. We paid nearly a hundred and forty thousand dollars in taxes and we are rule-following. Go after the illegal vacation rentals. Not those of us with no complaints who pay taxes to follow the rules. Thanks very much.
Thank you. After Sharon Davis, we'll have Norman Gilroy. Welcome.
Thank you. Sharon Davis, I live in the Chiquita Road area, which is north of Healdsburg, northwest of Healdsburg. So the maps are great, the statistics are great, but the reality is that most of the roads that access Chiquita Road and Dry Creek look like driveways. They are, some of them are dirt, some of them are paved roads that are old that need to be repaved. So why is this important? Because evacuation on roads like that are difficult for people that know what they're doing. So when we say that the vacation renters need to evacuate with the warning, they're not gonna have the NICSIL on their phone. The NICSIL is something that Sonoma County residents know and love. But if you're coming from Massachusetts or New York to spend the weekend, that isn't something necessary that you're gonna have as a tool. So there needs to be a way of enforcing that for people that get their permit or their business license. The business license that we were talking about with Gary on a Zoom sounds like probably the best way of enforcing any problems. Because you do have the ability yearly to check that the right name is on. Because you do have the ability yearly to check that the right name is on the permit, and you have a way of having the neighbors voice their complaints if there are any. The road that I live in has 12 parcels, 10 houses, three people live there full-time. So whether they're permitted or not, there are seven out of 10 parcels that have strangers in our neighborhood pretty much consistently. I've lived there 40 years. The neighborhood changes radically when you do not know who your neighbors are, don't know their phone numbers, and the management may or may not be accessible to you if there's a problem. Thank you. I think what you're doing is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. After Norman Gilroy, we'll have Jennifer Cogliandro.
Norman Gilroy, I'm from the former Hughes Chicken Colony. The chickens are not there, except a few in my backyard. However, it does have a history, and it has a history of a growing community. We've lived there 30 years now. We knew our neighbors. We were able to work our problems with them across the fence when necessary. Nowadays, we live very close to many hotels with a little in the way of services. So there's a difference. Things have changed. Your job, I think, here today, as has been defined by staff, is to identify the areas that are already over-concentrated and then to devise what the solution to that might be. I would contend that the Hughes Chicken Colony is one of those already over-concentrated areas. And the numbers on the screen were rate very high, 16.2%. And that's if you don't count the additional second homes in the area, which take it up to a high percentage of absentee residents in the area. The fact that the area by education in Burndale is now at roughly 45% of density due to the way county staff has issued permits. And by the way, it seems to me, Mr. Cunnings, that one of the things that you might put in your list is a way to allow staff to look at an area when they're issuing permits and see whether or not they are creating, through the issuance of those permits, an area of concentration on that street. That has happened to us. We have five of them in one very short block of only 13 parcels. And so that's one thing I think could be improved in the normal process. I think that the Hughes Chicken Colony is a candidate for your concern about overconcentration. It is a candidate, I think, for an exclusion zone, and I would ask you to find in that direction. I have in addition four letters from people in the area who couldn't get them in in time for the deadline.
Give those to staff.
I would say that we had only a few days to do this and to get the word out. People were very mystified by what this letter was all about, and some of us had to do some explaining. So perhaps next time we could give them more time to respond, because this has been a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
So after Jennifer Cogliandro, we'll have Jeff Guzman.
Hello, Jennifer Cogliandro, and I'm with Home Suite Host Property Management. I've been doing property management for over seven years. And honestly, in the seven years, there's only been two small, tiny little parties that I've ever known about under my management. And most of the hosts that I have met over the seven years, which is over about 100 hosts, have usually want to rent out their home for three to six months out of the year. Mostly because they want to go travel the world, or maybe they travel for business.
Jennifer, which area do you manage?
Sonoma County. In the past, I've managed in San Francisco and the Greater Bay Area.
In some of the specific map regions that we?
So far, I don't have any clients in Sonoma County, so if anyone's looking for a property manager. But I just wanted to come on here. I am looking for clients. I'm not here to advertise. But I'm just here to represent hosts who do want to short-term rental, because even if it's just for three months, like, the city of San Francisco put regulations on so people can do it for three months out of the year. And that really helps a lot of hosts. I've had clients who, they're significant, and they're in assisted living, and they need help paying for that. They, you know, just all different kinds of reasons. So I just wanted to come here and represent hosts everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jeff Guzman, we'll have Mary Ann Gustafson.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jeff Gustafson, and I live on Gates Road. I built a house there 38-plus years ago. What staff has pointed out is it's got some unique characteristics. It's a narrow, windy, steep, one-way road. It's a privately maintained road. It means that work needs to be done. It's me and a handful of other folks get out to the work. I had no help from the rental companies. I noticed it's shown that there's like five permitted rentals, but I know eight. Two of them are hosted, six are unhosted. One of the permitted rentals is permitted for three bedrooms and six overnight guests. Yet on VRBNO, it's shown as an eight-bedroom, nine-bath, 15-guest overnight. Just on Gates Road, for $4,300 a night. It's out of control. You know, I'm glad that this is being addressed now, because in the past, how permits were handed out haphazardly, it's kind of affected the quality of our life without, and these permits were handed without consideration of the environment that they're giving these permits for. We, the residents, have provided the surroundings for these business owners to sit back and collect their rent, while we that live there pay the price of increased traffic, noise, and diminished quality of life. So I'm glad this is being addressed now, so that we can put the brakes on the swinging further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mary Ann, after Mary Ann Gustafson, we'll have Lynn Woolley.
I'm Mary Ann Gustafson, and I live on Armstrong, just off Armstrong Woods on Melody Lane. And when we moved up there 40 years ago, we did so because it was so quiet and so regal. And it was wonderful. And then about six, seven, eight years ago, I guess, it started getting fewer neighbors and more people that you didn't know. You couldn't wave hello to. You didn't know their names. They wouldn't return your dog if it got too far astride. And the whole, the whole culture of that beautiful area just disintegrated. And I miss that, and I just hope that no more of the rentals. And it's right behind, one of the noisiest ones is right behind my bedroom. And their area on the deck is just right, right there, and it is so loud. And by the time, if you get any help, you're lucky, otherwise those things don't end. It just goes on all the time. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Anyway, the whole area is changing, and I feel bad about that. As much as I feel sorry for people who need the income, I would hope that there would be some other way that they could do so and have a better control over people who come into your neighborhood that you don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. After Lynn Woolley, we'll have Lindsay Darb.
Hi, I'm Lynn Woolley, and I'm Mary Ann's neighbor. And first, I want to thank you, Gary, for your outstanding report. I know it takes a lot, it's offered all types of considerations, and there are things that you cannot see on a map. Her house and my house are one, are the very next property from the exclusion zone on Melody Lane. And I know that, you know, if you look at the map, that's the way it is, or the things, the constraints, I understand. But I still think you did a great job, otherwise. I just want to say that the part of Gurnville we live in is one and a half flat, beautiful, walkable miles from the town center. But to have all the vacation rentals that have accumulated within, even prolifically, within the last maybe seven, eight years, it does destroy the feeling of the neighborhood. So what I want to say is that, please, consider all the aspects. The other major thing is that our access out is limited to one road. And I know that's not part of Phase One, but in some area, maybe Phase Two or another part, it will be a determining factor. Just consider that part of Gurnville in your plans, please. We love it. We'd love to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. After Lindsay, we'll have Eric Fraser.
Hi there. Thank you so much. My comments, of course, Sonoma County in general. So a lot of the challenges that homeowners are bringing up and will continue to hear regarding noise, parking requirements, emergency procedures are going to be addressed with the new business license, even holding property managers more accountable. So that is all wrapped in with the new package. Regarding the zoning, so I feel like the inclusion of only residentially developed parcels is worrisome. I don't think there's a great mechanism to add in newly developed parcels and adjust the cap accordingly. If areas like Chiquita Road and Norton Road at four acres per parcel aren't an ideal area, and they have good access to Litten Springs Road, Highway 101, and there are three wineries along that area as well, where is the ideal area for short-term rentals? The inclusion of limited commercial parcels in the rezoning is also concerning. The short-term rentals are often vilified as a commercial enterprise in a residential area, yet we're now trying to remove them from commercial zones as well. Outreach for the process has been minimal, as you heard from a lot of the speakers already. I reached out to the planning department twice to find out how to get involved for specific homeowners in the north Sonoma area, like Falcon Road, Theodore Lane, and did not get a response back. Had it been more extensive, you may have found more examples, like the Fitch Mountain Road area, where the neighborhood actually wanted a cap versus an exclusion zone. Finally, I would say, two months ago, I attended a meeting led by a firm at Sonoma, and they stated that analysis for rezoning would not be ready until 2024 due to the amount of research that would be required. Yet here we are, two months later, and so this feels like a little bit of a rushed effort and maybe needs some more work before a final analysis or decision is made. And then finally, I'll just say, why not allow LIA-zoned parcels under two acres that aren't suitable for agriculture to be allowed for short-term rentals, as we're looking at this? Thank you.
Thank you. After Eric Fraser, Charles Metz.
Yes, thank you very much, and my pleasure to follow Lindsay. She articulated the concept of the vacation rental license as being one to determine fact certain when it comes to what vacation rentals are operating. I've heard a lot of talk about the concept of unpermitted vacation rentals, but surely there's no mention of the fact that all bookings over the platform, the taxes collected on the platform from the most partner permitted to the county. In fact, the tax collection is very important. And so when I stand here, as I'm writing notes here for the next chapter of 1984, is your determination to stick with stuff that isn't fact-based at all. The testimony today included the fact that many vacation rental permits that are issued by the county aren't in fact active. In fact, I heard in testimony today from staff that said on Theodore Lane that 40% were converted to vacation rentals. No, that's not true. I've interviewed the property owners of Theodore Lane. There's not 40% active vacation rentals there. And what is a vacation rental? Something that operates for one night out of the year? You don't even have a definition on that, but yet you have this attack on the middle class and people that need to pay their bills to fix their homes or to raise their families. And you do that based on your ideology, time and time again. Why can't we get to the facts? You bring up on your slide Gates Road as an example. Truly, every vacation rental, anybody who's involved in the environment, wants good, peaceful neighborhoods. But yet you just vilify people, just constantly with your lack of facts and your activist staff. This isn't good for our democracy. This isn't good for our area. What we do see is when there's regulation on vacation rentals, corruption in government goes up. So let's speak to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. After Charles Metz, we have Danny Drury.
Danny, head to lead.
Hi, my name is Charles Metz. I'm a local resident. I want to remind the Planning Commission and the folks in the audience that in the current new vacation rental ordinance, there's a provision where only one permit per person, and it can't be a corporation. So you're not going to have corporations coming in, and no one's going to be able to operate more than one short-term rental. That's new. Because there's a lot of reasons. People share their home short-term. For some, it's for a rainy day, or it's part of their retirement plan. Because one never knows when some unexpected event in their life, whether that's a loss of a job, care of a loved one, divorce, death of a spouse, they find themselves needing to earn extra income. And offering a home short-term could only be the way to make ends meet. My dad's 96 years old and in a retirement community, and those facilities are expensive. Sometimes people have to sell their home to afford the cost of living in a care facility. But if people could rent their home short-term, that money can be used to help pay for their care, and the home will be theirs to return to in the event they get better or enter hospice and need to return home because the facility can't care for them anymore. If they rented, if they rented their, out their home long-term to earn income, they would have to wait 30 to 60 days after getting notice to return. And people who enter hospice rarely have that long to wait. I think the current limitations that are in the ordinance, like I said, with the number of permits, can only be one, and it has to be a person like you remain. I'm for that. And I'm also for, I wish our ones could be able to do that. Because that's really what the working class people are, and in times of need, that's when they need a permit. Thanks.
Thank you. After Danny Drury, we have Per Rosdale. Danny left, so Per, it's up to you. After Per, we'll have Jennifer Worts.
Good afternoon. My name is Per Rosdall. I'm in Glen Elven since 15 years. Last couple of years, I have been renting my house there. I think Gary and the Planning Commission has done a good job of this. I'm not effective yet on the proposal that you have in front of you today, but this will be concentration. I think it's a good way to look at the, look at the whole thing, the situation with vacation rental. Because vacation rental is a good, good way for both the county and for people in the county to gain economy. So, but of course, we don't want to have too high concentration. So I think the approach that Gary and you guys are taking, I think is the right kind of approach. And look at more at the areas where you have a problem, not look at the whole county. Looking at the areas where it gets to high concentration and deal with that problem there. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. So after Jennifer Worts, we'll have Dan Vino. Welcome.
Hey, my name is Jennifer Worts. I'm a volunteer for a nonprofit in the Russian River area called the Russian River Alliance. I started a fund to help local workers with things like emergency grant utilities about five or six years ago to prevent homelessness. Seems to be helping. I have no personal financial interest. A lot of people, I think, that come here and speak about this do have some personal financial interest. I am here representing the people that you don't hear a lot from, the local workers, because most of them honestly don't have the financial ability to be here. They're too busy working, struggling, trying to make their own way. They're too busy working, struggling, trying to make their own way. So I come here to speak for them. There's no affordable housing left, and we have a worker shortage now, and it's getting worse and worse. And none of this works. You can't just keep having more and more guests if there's nobody there to serve them. The small businesses also, to survive, have to be able to have workers to serve the guests. And so I feel like we need to have balance, and I'm not against vacation rentals, but I'm 100% in agreement with your recommendations for exclusion zones and 5% caps, because as you know, our area has been way disproportionately overburdened, and it's time that we create some balance. The other thing I'd like to say is, there's a lot of illegal vacation rentals, and I've been banging my head on the wall with permit Sonoma about enforcement for years, to the point where I give up. I challenge you, the new thing to get around the moratorium is hosted rentals. I challenge you to anonymously call them and ask them about reporting a hosted rental that's not being hosted and see the response you get. They'll tell you every reason in the world. They can't do anything about it, just like they do with unpermitted rentals that are being, you know, the people are collecting the TOT and putting it in their pocket, and they say if they can't find the advertisement, they can't do anything. And it doesn't matter if you end up a receipt. They said they can't do anything. So anyway, I hope we can do better with enforcement, and thank you for making this recommendation.
Dan, Dan Guadino.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Guadino. I'm a resident of Sonoma County, representing White Country Better Way Rentals. We manage a few homes in the Bay Area and Sonoma County. I would like to express my deep concern regarding the lack of communication and public input in the crucial rezoning exclusion draft. With the ever increasing need to balance affordable housing with vacation rentals, this is an issue of utmost importance. Unfortunately, many individuals cannot attend in-person meetings due to work and other commitments, which is why it would be beneficial if virtual Zoom meetings were made available to ensure that everyone's voice is heard. Moreover, all relevant documents were only made available 72 hours ago, making it difficult to comprehend how the exclusion and caps were determined, because this has made it challenging for residents to follow and understand the proposed changes. I would like to draw your attention to the fact that Supervisor Hopkins had directed staff to complete a thorough analysis of neighborhoods recommending 0%, 5%, 10%, 15%, and maybe 20% cap zones, and include vacation rentals in the neighborhood cap zones. Permit Sonoma staff had also declared this could be done by the early 2023. Supervisor Hopkins had voted yes for the ordinance only with an asterisk that inclusion zones are included in the rezoning before the moratorium expires. However, today, the staff recommends a de facto ban by only including 0% and 5% zones, which is not what the board had directed them or the planning commission to do. Lastly, while I understand the need to balance affordable housing with standard vacation rentals, there should be a discussion and consideration for a hybrid license exclusively for primary homeowners. This license will allow them to short-term rent their homes for a maximum of 99. This way, homeowners can generate extra revenue to maintain their properties and keep their homes in case of job loss. In conclusion, I implore you to consider these concerns and ensure that the public has adequate opportunity to participate in this critical rezoning exclusion draft. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. So at this point, I've gone through all the speaker cards. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken who'd like to come up and speak? So please, will you come up? If you could state your name and which area that we're looking at today.
Hi, I'm Megs. I team. Hello, Gary. I don't usually do public speaking, so I am Margaret Van Der Veen, also known as Megs. I'm a business owner, and I manage two restaurants down Main Street in Gurnville, and I'm the president of the local Russian River Chamber. I'm here today to voice concern about the complete vacation rental exclusion and its economic impact on the Russian River area and to provide a solution-focused idea that remedies the absolutism and the rash decision to push through a vacation rental exclusion in the areas of Gurnwood Park, Neely Road, Monerosa, and Armstrong Woods Road in the 5th District. I employ people whose families often work in vacation homes, like housekeepers, maintenance staff, landscapers, contractors, whatever you name it. Some of my own employees do it as a part-time job to be able to afford their housing. This vacation rental exclusion would be the nail in the coffin for so many low family incomes. It would be the slow death of the Russian River area, whose economy has always relied on vacation rentals. We are a vacation rental economy. That is what we are about. It's how we are built. I assure you, the vacation rentals that are in questions will not be returned into regular housing units. The improvements that have been made to these houses and buildings do not lend themselves to single-family housing. I've spoken with many individual vacation rental owners, and they have all told me if there's an exclusion, those places will become their second homes, and they will vacation there every once in a while, and that is it. That will lead to unoccupied homes without regular maintenance, and that will impact the aesthetic of the neighborhood negatively, if not for unsafe...
I'm glad you could wrap it up here.
Sorry, if not for unsafe conditions on the fire season. If you need any numbers, TOT tax brings in $476,000, that is almost $3 million in six years, to the county, because we are unincorporated. We do not keep that money. My suggestion is that the Sonoma County Permitting Department and your team is to remember that we are talking about people's livelihoods, and that it's a trickle-down, in fact, to the whole economy of our area.
Hi, William Rice.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Regina Wallen, and I live in the huge Shell Chicken Colony. And I was going to begin to watch Walden. I live in the same situation. Norm is a wonderful guy back here who's lived there 30 something years, but I've never met him before. I spoke to him on the phone. I know he's done some really great things for our community. And he has rental properties on his house. His property has like three or four houses on his property. He's making an income on his property. And also, the other people that were against it, the few, three people that were against it, are making money on their houses. They're against it that are, they're one of the, at least one of them is one of the ones that is already a vacation rental, and she's against it. So when we first moved in, the little kids, 12-year-old and 6-year-old, the place across the street was getting rented, and it was, whenever it wasn't rented, it was just over and over. We had a drug house, a crack house. All night long, there were people pulling up, buying drugs. It was really, really horrible. And our area has gotten fixed up, and it's mostly with very wealthy people buying the properties, us our second homes. But the thing is, it actually has become a better community. Before, there were so many three families that had their kids that we all went to, the kids took the bus to our little private, not private, public school, Trustwood. And now, and we never had trick-or-treaters. We never had a community. There was no community. We had to go to town. All our friends were in town. I had no friends. Now, Laura's my next-door neighbor, best friend. I'm a landscape designer, and I've landscape 11 houses in the huge Shell Chicken Colony, and they're all lovely people. We have parties. We all get together. 20 kids came trick-or-treating. This never happened, ever. Our community is better than it's ever been. We have lovely, lovely, wonderful people.
Regina, your time's up. Can you wrap it up?
Thanks.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm not a public speaker, so.
You are.
I'm Laura Chung. I'm Laura Chung, and I'm from the huge Chicken Colony. I just want to thank you for being here and for doing the job, for sitting in the chair. I couldn't do it, but you're doing it. You could choose, by the way. I'm from Marin County. My husband and I were married here in the town of Sonoma. We had our fourth child here to be raised here in Sonoma. When we looked to purchase our home years ago was with the intent to plant roots, create community, and restore our home to bring in additional income. Our fourth son, he's a special. We personally have saved monies and spent wisely to rebuild with no debt. That's our goal. That's my aim. We've spent a little over $200,000 on just piping underneath our grounds, because the three properties around us, which are kind of large lots, were all much higher than ours. So we opted to fix the problem, right? So, and we personally pay a little over $8,000 in taxes per year. The key desire when we purchased this property was to restore the rent. We personally have saved these monies, and this has taken considerable time and effort on our part. In the meantime, in the timeframe we've lived here, we've developed a strong community of close friends, many of whom are all seeking to do the same to remain in this area. We don't have noise issues or lack of parking, as each of our lots are rather safe. We gather as a community in each other's homes for Christmas and birthdays and wedding celebrations, based on our personal experience of being here with our son and our neighbors. We take walks with our neighbors. There's no reason to change our zone now to re-stick vacation rentals in our neighborhood. From what I've heard so far, there are no options to do it: noise, parking, lack of family, lack of community. I absolutely agree with...
Regina, wrap it up for your...
Sure. Sorry. I absolutely agree in checking into those areas to ensure that those folks who already have it are actually in right standing. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Hello.
Hello. I'm the representative on the business side here. Just wanted to echo with those here saying that I purchased the property two years ago in Fitch Mountain and had to invest a lot of money to bring it to the, you know, the level of expectation of the rent of the property. I know it requires a lot of the stability access. It requires the, I actually had to install an electronic gate on the property. So I'm looking, but I added on top of the purchase price, probably $20,000, just to improve the area and property. So, and I'm sure that a lot of people like myself are doing the same. So plus, we're bringing a lot of economy to the area. Every, my guests are going to the wineries day and night. So we have to keep very, you know, carefully here, but strictly that, strictly not only us, but whole yourselves here, because everything's going to go down if we're going to mistake us.
Would you like to state your name?
My name is Aye the Grey.
Thank you. And which, ma'am, which area?
Fitch Mountain.
Fitch Mountain. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much to all of you. My name is Carol Letza. I am a local Realtor. I represent property owners who live here throughout the county and those who wish to purchase here. I have done a fair amount of work with county staff on this issue over the last 10 years and believe that the direction that the county is taking with the licensing and the new requirements will take care of a lot of the enforcement issues that have been mentioned here today. I think your task is to look at exclusion zones, and I wanted to bring up the fact that exclusion zoning has been used in our country, unfortunately, historically, to exclude people of color, people of certain nationality, people who don't belong here because they're not like us. And so I feel very strongly that complete exclusions over an area cause incredible problems like those in the past and like those that have been mentioned, squeezing vacation rentals just into other areas, not my own neighborhood. So the direction taken, the direction that the board supervisors asked you to take, was to look at neighborhoods and develop these percentages of what makes sense for that neighborhood, whether it be 5%, 10%, 15, or 20, and some of that will be based on historical use. Was that area largely a vacation spot? And as the people on Fitch Mountain found, it was, and it helps to have the vacationers there to a degree. We all want balance. We want the neighbors all to be safe and secure, and we want people to come here and want to be here with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who'd like to speak for a close of the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion. So a lot of, a lot of interesting testimony, some of it pointed at specific areas that we're contemplating. I'd like to consider maybe, you know, on each one of these, we're going to need to give direction. Are there some that are just clear-cut that maybe we can talk about? And then some of the other ones that are maybe a little bit more nuanced, maybe we can focus on those? And maybe each of the commissioners from the district can kind of take their district.
I've got some, I think, fairly quick ones in the 1st District, but I also have one that I want to mull around a little bit.
Okay.
So you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, if you want to start.
On Falton, Theodore, Gates, Glen Allen, Kenwood, Palmer, and Waldrew, I'm in favor of the staff recommendation for exclusion zone. I could at length explain, at least partially, the reason why Gates Road, 10 people can't walk up there at the same time. That's how narrow the road is. It's insane to have Gates Road being considered anything. In fact, I'm surprised they let people live there because the road is so narrow and can't, so small. And I think the other areas in the 1st District, I've heard, some of the Waldrew Heights, Waldrew Heights, and frankly, Falcon and Theodore aren't bad streets as far as access roads. I think the other areas, Glen Allen, Kenwood, and Palmer, the road access isn't quite as bad in those areas. The density is a little bit lower, but just the number of, you know, vacation rental permits, legal ones that we have there, let alone perhaps some that are legal. I think the staff recommendation is appropriate there for exclusion zone. The one thing I wanted to raise is Chicken Colony. And by the way, I mean, I've lived in Sonoma for a long time. I've never heard it called the Chicken Colony. I thought it's, I think that's pretty awesome, actually. That's a great name. I have a feeling I know what the agricultural crop was there in the one. But anyway, there was a lot of, there's a lot of opposition among the people in the written comments and also what we heard today. And Gary, if you could put up the numbers for Chicken Colony. The other factor with Chicken Colony is me...
Chicken Colony number one.
Pardon?
It's Chicken Colony, it's Chicken Colony number one on the subdivision.
Oh, there's two Chicken Colonies?
No, the second one never happened.
Oh. So since Petaluma was the egg capital of the world, which came first?
The colony.
I'm sorry. They're probably raised together. The Chicken Colony area is a little bit lower density. It's three-acre density. It is pretty flat, and driving around the area, the main road in is pretty wide. I don't see the narrow access roads there that I see in some of these other areas, but the road is in terrible shape. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why the staff went with the exclusion. I don't know what the supervisor's direction was on this one, if it was exclusion or whatever, but I think because the numbers are already over the 5% level, I'm okay with a 5% cap in that area. I don't, I do think we need to address the issue with some sort of cap on it, and I think 5% would work for me and give, gives a little bit of an opportunity there for some folks to have, to have. And I think 5% would work for me and give, gives a little bit of an opportunity there for some folks to have, to have rentals. So that's kind of where I am on the first district.
Are there, are there comments from other commissioners about the comments from Commissioner Carr about the first district?
Yeah, you know, I'm glad that he made the comments that he made. Actually, I used to work for the first district and I also didn't know it was Chicken Colony. So that was interesting to me when I saw it. Huh, I'll be darned. Anyway, I think that makes sense. I would, I would agree with what Commissioner Carr is pushing or is recommending, or some guessing. I don't know if it's official.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Carr. I am in agreement in general with changing to exclusion for areas that have dangerous roads. And I think that the Gates Road, Falcon Lane, Petal Lane, the Waldrew Heights, I think those are obvious ones. I'm not in favor of exclusion zones for areas that would not qualify under those dangerous road circumstances. So I think that a cap would be more appropriate for places like Kenwood. This is not my district, so I have to look on that really quickly. But it was definitely counted. I don't believe it was Glen Allen. So that's kind of my general opinion on those defenses. Since I'm in District Three and I don't have any of these, I'm just gonna add those little comments there.
Okay. Commissioner, comments over? You have any comments on the...
I have one second, please.
Yep, take your time. Oh, in the meantime, I'll make my comments. I think that that makes a lot of sense. And I also think that the dangerous road and situation I'm talking about really comes into play. And I think I agree with your assessments there. And as far as, from what we heard, in the Kenwood area, we heard from some speakers from Kenwood, we got some correspondence from them. They were seemingly in favor of having the exclusion down. So I think I...
Kenwood's in favor?
Yeah. So I think I align with what you're talking about there, Commissioner Carr. Eric, ready?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions for staff. In part, just though I know the answer, I think it's worth restating it for foundation for my comments. So in areas where there are current permits that exceed the proposed new levels or the implementation of exclusion, my understanding is the existing permit holders continue to operate.
That is correct.
And so long as there isn't a transfer of title that triggers the termination of a permit, so if it's among the family, they would continue to be able to operate under their existing permit.
That is correct unless it's a vote for non-compliant conditions.
So reduction isn't a hammer that comes down immediately. It fades out over time.
That, that's, that's correct. And in Fitch Mountain, it's the only place where we've had some help tracking that. And it's, it's probably not more than, 12 to 18% since we enacted it in 2016. So it's a slow attrition rate.
Is that, is that 12 to 18% of the 8%?
Of the, of the rentals that were operating when the exclusion zone went in place, between 12 and 18% of those have transferred and the permits have been voided. We have not had any revocations. We just, but we have had ones that are voided because of transfer of the property.
So somewhere between 1 and 10 and 1 and 7.
Correct.
And then just a couple of other comments. And this to staff. I really would like to see the proximity issue raised again and explored just for us on a general topical issue. But in some of these areas, you can have over-concentration within the percent we're talking about if it's, if there's, you know, if you don't engage the issue of proximity to some extent somehow. In other words, if you look at these places where there are, you know, 60 parcels, your 5% cap. But if the 5% are all on one or two streets or dominant presence on some of the streets, I think that, you know, it defeats the purpose in terms of trying to maintain community character and neighborhood equality. So, you know, that's something that isn't specific to the fifth district, but is something I think deserves looking further into. With regard to one of the speakers, I think completely misinterpreting and misstating what the purpose or function of the phrase exclusion zones. I have to push back on that. That's not what we're doing here. Every single zoning category is loaded with things that are excluded in that zoning category. So let's be very clear about what we're talking about. We're not even saying you can't have a rental property. You can do long-term rental with these properties. It's not, so, you know, this idea that somehow this quote exclusion zone equates in any way to the historical abuses that we're all familiar with just should be really well-understood. That's not what we're talking about. With regard to the fifth district. So there, first of all, I support the staff's recommendation on all 11.
Commissioner Carr, we're talking about the first district.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you came... I'm sorry. I thought you didn't work through the district.
Oh, no. I was just gonna...
Just say yes, Mr. Carr. We'll go along with your recommendation. At least, well, I noted that I do here, so.
We'll go to the fifth one.
No, that's fine. I thought you were working down the road before we took him up. But it's fine. Yes. What were you talking about?
I was talking about the first district.
Right.
I'm sorry.
With regard to, with regard to Commissioner Carr, I guess not. I guess not. You talking to me?
Okay, so I think we have consensus on the first district, on recommendations on the first district. Is that clear? Do we need to take an official straw vote on that?
What, what I heard is going with staff's recommendation, except for the Chicken Colony, which would be recommended as a cap as opposed to an exclusion zone. And do be aware that the five, you know, 5% cap, you could do 10 if you felt that was appropriate, but I heard 5%. Okay, just verifying.
Yes.
I just want to make sure it goes in the record that I wasn't going along with all of the recommendations. So did I understand I'm probably the only one? I do believe that the huge Chicken Colony should be a cap. I believe that the Kenwood should be a cap. And then I'm trying to pull up the maps real quickly so that I can make sure I'm giving you exactly the specifics.
Eric, I can pull them up for you on the screen.
The ones with accessible roads.
So like Glen Allen, for example?
And, right, and Glen Allen should be a cap. So essentially just, I think it's just Falcon Lane, Gates Road, Waldrew Heights were the really, were the bad ones. And those are the ones that I, I'm going with. Any other ones, 5% cap. I just want it to go in the record. Thank you.
Okay, for a minute.
So with that, do we want to take a vote on? Commissioner Dillard, are you, what was your, do you have any specific ones that you differ from?
No, I, I would agree with Commissioner Carr's recommendation.
Staff. Staff would recommend at this time taking a straw vote and then we will go through as staff and confirm each one to take the final actions, letting resolution at the end.
Okay. So we'll do a straw vote at this point on District One and I'll make the, because the question is, do we go along with staff's recommendation? It seems like the majority is all of the staff recommendation except the Chicken Colony is moved to 5%.
Right. That's, that's the proposal.
Do you want to see a thumbs up or thumbs down on that?
So we're taking that.
Do we support Commissioner Carr's recommendation?
Yes.
I, to the chair, if I may, because we have separate resolutions and it sounds like some of these areas are a 5-0 vote and some areas are a 4-1 vote, even though it's a little cumbersome, I recommend doing a straw vote on each area.
Okay. So let me ask you a procedural question.
Yes.
We're not doing straw votes because we're gonna come back later. We're doing straw votes, but we're gonna vote on everything today.
I think so.
So can't we just do straw votes at this phase? Because we're gonna, we're gonna do everything by the list at the conclusion, so.
I think it's pretty clear about District One where we all stand.
So let's, so let's just vote on it.
Yeah, why not?
Oh, probably let's just draw a vote.
Yeah, wouldn't it do no point in straw voting? Let me, let me pull up some resolutions here. There's a lot.
Twenty-one.
I'm gonna ask another procedural question of council ordinance. I don't think we need to re-titling each of the resolutions. Can't we just say by, you know, resolution, that recommendation related to Falcon Lane?
Yes, I think that's sufficient.
Probably better. Okay. Commissioner Carr, you want to call them out or are you in a position to do that?
Okay.
Let's just do Falcon Lane. Go on Falcon Lane. I, I'm okay with staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All of, or do I have to do a roll call? Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
So Gates Road, recommend exclusion per staff.
Second.
May I roll a vote?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
Glen Allen, staff recommendation, I recommend.
Second.
May I roll a vote?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
No.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
Hughes Chicken Colony recommending a change from the staff recommendation to 5% cap instead of an exclusion zone.
Second.
May I roll a vote?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
Recommend an exclusion zone for Kenwood per staff recommendation.
Second.
May I roll a vote?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
No.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
Palmer Harrington recommends staff recommendation for exclusion zone.
Second.
Roll a vote, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
No.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
And last one, Waldrew Heights recommend exclusion zone per staff recommendation.
Second.
May I roll a vote?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
Chair McCaffrey. I had to switch it up. I had to, had to make sure it was my intention.
Okay, we're through with District One, so now we can go to District Four.
Yeah.
District Four is out there. So in District Four, here if you could bring them up. I think we have two or three. We have Norton, Chiquita, and Fitch Mountain.
And as we're pulling things up, just, I'll say this again at the end for final vote, but each of these items is individually not appealable. They will be heard by the board of supervisors, tentatively scheduled for April 2nd and 4th. So I just recognize that some people are, when they say areas, and maybe, I just wanted to get that.
So in this one, I think that I would let you just, my preference would be a slight modification from staff's recommendation and that is to make them all a 5% cap. I think the Fitch Mountain community worked together really well on this, but I think that the, the lack of housing stock in the Healdberg area outweighs my desire to see more vacation rentals in that area. And that's, that's where I stand on this one. I know that at the last meeting, I recommended a complete exclusion. But I just think that I changed to 5% instead of, right? I can't deal with a 10%.
So I'll second that if that's your motion.
Go ahead.
Could I just make a comment?
Yes.
I'm really happy to see that there was a survey conducted by the, on the board of the community. But I think that it's, I guess I'm glad, I'd like to have the community. I'm glad we're going, we're doing the 5%. I think that is in line with the fifth district recommendations. But I would just like to make a comment that I would have liked to have seen something very similar in, for example, Hostanda, Summerham Park, Rio Del, places that were traditionally vacation rentals. And I wonder if we wouldn't have come back with something closer to 10% on a recommendation about those neighborhood residences. So I feel like there's, there's a big lost opportunity there.
Yeah, you know, another, another issue is that I see is, kind of was brought up here today was that there are so many rentals that aren't on the radar. And so the reality we see from here at 8.3% that is currently, or 8.1% that's currently on Fitch Mountain, but in reality, it could be much more. And I think that that's, that just worries me. And being an advocate for housing in the area, I think turning them into vacation rentals, I think that this is a good compromise in between complete exclusion and 10%, which would allow more. Under this, it's okay to throw a comment in too.
I'm, I remember the vote on the exclusion zone and I was disappointed to see relaxing that because of the nature of this area and the narrow road and high density. And I, and I completely appreciate Commissioner O'Conne saying about the historical, you know, visitor serving, historical nature of this area. But to me, it's just, it's the access problems, the narrow road, the high density. I, I like that you're going down from 10 to 5. Excuse me, from 10 to 5, but I'm leaning toward an X here, keeping the X, just because of those conditions.
Well, my, my desire for compromise here is that since it is currently above 5%, it is classically in that way, that it is effectively it is.
And you got, you have some community support for that. In fact, there's a clear majority, not everybody.
There's clear community support.
Okay.
So I have, I think I have a...
Second.
Motion, please. Yeah. So I think we have to break these up. So I will make a motion on Chiquita Road, staff recommendation, 5%.
I'll second that.
Roll a vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
Commissioner...
Yes.
All right, last time I promised, Chair McCaffrey.
Yes.
Fitch Mountain, modification from staff recommendation, 5%.
Second.
Roll a vote, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Delarty?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Here. Yes.
You need a little more training on plating.
It's only my first real day just having a real conversation.
Commissioner Koenig Scholper?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes. Norton Road, staff recommendation, five percent.
Second.
May I roll a vote, please?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Delarty?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenig Scholper?
Yes.
And Chair McCaffrey?
Yes.
Okay, District Five.
Quickly, please, Commissioner Koenig Scholper.
I'm going to, well, just say a couple things. Addressing the four areas in District Five that are recommended for exclusion, I'm going to tell you why I support each of those specific recommendations. When you look at Armstrong Woods Road, for those of you that are familiar with it, and the adjacency to R1, what we're talking about there, well, let me just start with this. I look at this whole topical area as having a variety of public interest points. One is housing stock, the never-ending debate, or narrative we hear about having housing shortage. And I would also make a reference, and in particular to District Five, if you think back of the areas that are identified for high-density housing in the Fifth District in the housing element, and how extreme some of those proposals are when you're getting into those really, really high densities. I look at this as a zero-sum game. Every unit that is a vacation rental unit is not a unit that's available for somebody that is a permanent resident and potentially workforce housing. And when we are taking such aggressive efforts to satisfy our duty as a community under state law for housing, I look at that and I directly connect it to the conversion of houses to short-term rentals. Now, that raises the question of areas that are historically vacation rental areas. The vacation, the general reference to areas as being, having a hundred-year or more history as summer homes, I mean, living with a summer home, summer home park. What was a vacation unit in most of that one hundred years was owned by a family, used by a family seasonally, and they shut them up in the off-season. Then there was transition of those, many of them, to very affordable housing in the sixties and seventies in our county. So, a big chunk of those became year-round housing. With the onset of a technological breakthrough, relatively, basically, the internet, the entire process and nature of vacation rentals changed radically. What I see us dealing with as a community now is trying to get ahead of the curve of the technology that drove all of this before the regulatory reaction to it. So, we're catching up. The other two things that I, that factor into for me are community or neighborhood character, and also public safety specifically, and mostly fire safety. But in the Russian River, it's also flooding, and throughout the county, it's also earthquake, lest we forget, since we just haven't had one of those for a while. So, when I look at the four exclusion areas, Armstrong Woods Road, it's a one-way out, and it's adjacent to areas that are, but it's adjacent and part of area that's relatively densely developed residential. Now, I would also note that Armstrong Woods Road is a road that's not just a road that serves residential traffic, but it serves a state park, which factors into the evacuation issues potentially. So, I think it's appropriate that the staff recommend an exclusion there. And I would say too, that my understanding is that these recommendations were in consultation with Fifth District Supervisor District staff, so these have been gone through carefully, not just by permits and home staff. When we looked at the other, the second of the four, Drake Road, that's just correcting a couple little pockets that are outlier from the general neighborhood there. When we look at Gurnwood Park, Monarosa, again, it's basically capturing some areas that are quote "left out" and that we have these other interest points. And then also, just as a footnote, we'll be seeing a return of a hotel proposal that's right in this area as well, and, you know, factors into the whole issue of evacuation, public awareness, et cetera. So, I think that's appropriate. With regard to the fourth and final exclusion area, Neely Road, you know, that is, there's no, there's no better example county-wide of an area that is one way in, one way out, unless you decide you're going to drive down and jump in the river as your evacuation route. So, I think all four of those are appropriately exclusion areas for the reasons I cited. I agree with staff's recommendation on all eleven of the areas within the Fifth District, and move collectively and individually that staff recommendation be adopted.
Do any other commissioners have any comments on the Fifth District recommendations from the Fifth District?
A couple, just a couple comments. When I went through the Fifth District stuff and I looked at the numbers, and you pointed this out early on, the difference in the number of parcels versus the number of single-family units in place, and I suspect that, given the history, even with staff's warning about economic changes in the economics and how much people could afford to spend to develop property now that they couldn't afford to twenty years ago, so, or earlier, there's another change that's in the wind that can affect the development of these parcels, and that's the possibility that compost toilets will become legal. And if you think, if you think growth issues in Sonoma County are a big deal now, wait until compost toilets are legal, because the numbers you'll see here are much of the county that's undeveloped, parcels in the county would all of a sudden become developable, and that can completely change the nature of this thing. And what that makes me think is that I don't, I'm ready to go exclusion on all of these areas, because I just see the percentage of allowable vacation rentals go up as that occurs. And the other reason, the other big reason here is, is the roads. I mean, you know, these roads are just, they're narrow, they're windy, there are a couple, you're right, Commissioner, that there are some that have more than one way in and out, maybe Monarillo is a little bit more accessible, you know, some areas where it's a little flatter down along the river, but, man, I, it's, if we're looking at road conditions and access as a factor here, I just, you know, I'll consider what your recommendation is and vote on it that way, but I'm concerned about that part.
Let me respond to both those salient points. If compost toilets do become legal in our unincorporated areas, that is a phenomenal game changer, and it has just incredible implications. A lot of the areas where there are, I don't know if you guys have done a survey of how many legal undeveloped parcels there are countywide, but in your little, in your little neighborhood, Camp Meeker, you know, Monarillo, and if any of you haven't gone, I would just recommend, go to Monarillo and drive Stereodile. You know, you think Oakland Hill's fire? Child's play compared to what, you know, you get a fire in one of those areas. And there's not one of those areas, there's twenty of those areas out there. You add density on what have been for decades undeveloped with the parcels, because they're not in the sewer, you can't, you can't meet subject requirements currently, you put composting toilets into the mix, and all those become developable. The county's going to face a huge problem about what do you do with the compost toilet allowance on previously undeveloped parcels that are on eight-foot, eight-foot wide roads that are really steep? I mean, it's, so, in event, in event that that were to occur, to me, that changes the entire foundation of the decision that we're making today and my recommendation. It basically would, you know, the entire question needs to be revisited. And it does raise another question that's going to come up, for those of you that will be sitting on the, you know, hotel project, is just, you know, just exactly, how does staff make the analysis of the relevance of the evacuation issue? How do you, you know, I have yet to see, what's the analytical construct that gets applied to that question? I'm going to raise that when we get to that sort of project.
But we didn't get that when we asked the SDC.
No, and we really need to know, and it's just, it's, there has to be some analytical process, you know? If staff's saying that sometimes it's an issue or sometimes it's not, it's a secret process, how do you reach either of those conclusions? So, at this point, that's my recommendation, but to your point, if there's a game-changing alteration, and I also, since this is part one of this total question of what do we do with vacation rentals, I view all of this not as, okay, this is fixed and forget about it for the next thirty years. As far as I'm concerned, if some, something develops that wasn't anticipated or that we see is problematic, I might come back next year, or next month, or, you know, a month after it's approved, because, you know, this is a, this is a really challenging problem for the county. You know, and we see, we look at Hillsburg and areas outside Hillsburg, why is there so much pressure? Because Hillsburg said we're done with it. Sonoma said we're done with it. Hawaii said we're done with it. Napa said we're done with it. You know, as far as I'm concerned, if I was voting on it today, I might be inclined to go with a county-wide exclusion, period. So, but we're not at that point, so, thank you for allowing my elaboration on my.
I just think it's good to point that out to people, because I don't think a lot of our folks that are just relative newcomers in the county and the decision-making about parole are even aware of the legacy of undeveloped parcels that were there because they were created years and years.
A hundred years ago.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You can get a parcel in Camp Meeker if you subscribe to the Chronicle. That's lore. I don't know if it's been fact-checked, but that's the lore.
It's true, and I own fourteen of them.
Wow, you must really be a newspaper guy.
It's almost a quarter acre.
Yeah.
I just want to weigh in on this a tiny bit. For me, the First District and the Fourth District were really easy. The Fifth District was a little tougher because of the balance of tourism, traditional vacation areas out there and what have you, although communities change. And I, for example, grew in Fairfax. Fairfax used to be vacation central in our county, and by the time I was a kid growing up there, that had shifted. So, communities do shift. And I'm also, I also really want to recognize that the staff didn't make these recommendations in a silo. Having worked for the Board Supervisor's Office, I know the volume of calls that come in from affected neighbors, and I know the amount of work that Supervisor Hopkins and her staff probably put into this input. And because of that, I would defer to Commissioner Koenig Scholper, and I would agree with your recommendations.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Thank you. I was hoping that staff could bring up the numbers report for Armstrong Woods, and then Drake Road and Gurnwood Park. And the reason that I'm asking that is because if we did a, if we can send it to a five percent cap on Armstrong Woods, for example, in relation to the vacation rentals that are permitted there, I'm trying to understand those numbers real quickly. So, essentially.
Put it through the chair, put it, put this slide.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at it right there.
Okay.
So, what would be the difference of a five percent cap based on the vacation rentals that are already permitted there? Is, what was that number? I'm sorry, you actually provided that to us. So, it's eleven point two percent right now, correct? So, it's way over the five percent?
Correct.
Yeah. And then same with Drake Road and Gurnwood Park. And so, is the point of create an exclusion essentially so that eventually there'll be no permits there, unless we have transfer ownership all the way down the line, and then there'll be no opportunity for vacation rentals, correct? That's essentially what will eventually happen if we create exclusion zones in these areas.
That is, that is correct, with the exception of Armstrong. It's also that ninety percent of that area is already in a zoning district that prohibits vacation rentals, so it would be kind of moot.
Right. So, my, I grew up on Russian River. My family arrived to Gurnville nineteen, I'm sorry, in eighteen fifty-two. We were some of the first settlers out there. My family's the riding hours, so if you're from Gurnville, then you know who we are. I strongly believe that it is really important to support the tourism out there. I think that there's, there's very little housing, I understand that, but there's also very little income out there. And the only way to make money out there is to work in the service industry unless you're doing something illicit, which a lot of people do, and that's why they live out there. And I want to comment on, I think it's Max, Meg?
Yep.
Thank you for everything you've done for Gurnville, by the way. I agree with you. Let me just pull up my little comment here, I want to ask. I don't believe that a lot of those vacation rental homes that have been fixed up to go on the market and rent for the rates that they are renting for will ever be available to most of the people that live and work in Gurnville. And so, I think that by excluding those, by turning those houses into essentially very high, very high-income resale value, that you're, you're removing that opportunity from, from the labor opportunity for the community. I also really wanted to touch upon the commenter who I think was also maybe in Fitch Mountain, I'm not sure, but I think it's important to consider that when we take away vacation rentals, especially in a place where there's no hotels, there's a few hotels that are extraordinarily expensive to regular people, then you limit the ability for regular people to enjoy the area. And so, Summer Home Park, Gurnwood Park, Neely Road, all, I understand that there's a lot of folks that had an awesome opportunity to buy really low-valued houses in the sixties and seventies, and they're still living there, and they're enjoying that area, but you don't get to be the only people that enjoy that area, and I think that's a big problem that we're facing right now. So, I'm very much against an exclusion in anywhere where it's not a really dangerous road, I'll just reiterate that. I think that a five percent cap is a little low, but I would agree to that. I'm probably the only one on the panel here that is going to object to these exclusions. I understand the staff put a lot of work into this, and I appreciate it, but I think that Gurnville area, the lower Russian River area, is an exception to the rest of the county, and people who live there really depend on the ability to work in their, in the area that they live in. It's not fair to require people to drive into Santa Rosa or drive into Gurnwood Park just for a, you know, fifteen dollar an hour job when they're. for a, you know, fifteen dollar an hour job when there could be an opportunity to manage properties or do landscaping or contracting in this turnover that's perpetuated by vacation rentals. So, those are my comments, I'm, I, those are the four exclusions I'm not review.
So, which, which ones were those?
So, it's Armstrong Woods, uh, Road, essentially Burnwood Park, Neely Road, and Drake Road. Drake Road, I just wanted to ask a question about really quickly because I'm not personally familiar with that. I think I heard somebody mention that that was just bringing us into compliance, or do I, I think Commissioner Koenigshofer mentioned something?
It came through, through the chair, I mean, Neely certainly, if that doesn't hit the bar of being a dangerous road.
Okay.
Um, it's a, it's a dead-end road.
Right, Neely, I understand, absolutely.
So, you're at the end of a road, you have to judge your waste floor plan to a state.
Right, you correct me, yeah, and I'll take that personally.
And, and Drake, Drake Road, those parcels there, probably were weak to reevaluate the land use, they all would have been R1 anyway at this point. So, they're, they're only able to have vacation rentals because of what may have been a technical error in mapping. That, that whole area's an urban service area, meets the criteria for R1 zoning, and if it was in R1, you wouldn't be able to have vacation rentals there, so it's kind of putting all the property owners on an even footing with the charter.
Okay, so it's the Drake Road, and you're right, I, I agree that Neely Road, um, see, Neely Road, and it's very much like Burnwood Park Road, or Burnwood Park, and I, and I think also like Armstrong, it's a one-way out. I guess, I, you know, I'm open to commissioners' discussion on why Neely Road would be perhaps more dangerous than.
It's a really long road.
Right, it is, you're right, it is very long, and you're very, and then you're not getting out, you're going to the river, so I do agree with that.
I mean, the other, the other thing for Commissioner O'Conne is that there is another part of this that's gonna come forward, it's gonna look at the, the relative importance of tourism versus, versus residential, and I, is it possible that some of these areas might come back if, for example, you looked at Armstrong Woods or Burnwood Park or something, and you said, okay, the ten percent is too low because of the historical nature of the tourism aspect of it? I mean, is that possible, or is that later analysis gonna only deal with other areas that we're not talking about now? Just through, through the chair, the, the direction we received, um, when the ordinance initially passed is to develop a resort overlay zoning district that then would, you know, would override the restriction in R1. We haven't developed this yet, so this, this is something we haven't even started work on, but the concept would be, you look at an area, you look at the, the demand, the carrying capacity, and compatibility with the community, and you decide what, we would decide, or we'd recommend to the commission, what appropriate number of rentals would be to support that local tourism economy, and then they'd be allowed within that overlay zone.
But the overlay theoretically could include some of these areas that we're now being.
Oh, cor- correct, but I mean, we would, we'd wanna look at it with a clean slate, make sure that geographically it lines up with the need.
Yeah.
If I may through the chair, um, we would likely be looking at the boundaries again with the next zoning option. If for any reason there was intent to go with a higher cap than ten percent, anywhere the ordinance itself would need to be reopened, and at this time, that is not part of the project.
Thank you.
Book Chair?
Yes.
Say a name, couple of comments. So, I, I guess that Commissioner O'Conne's thinking might be different regarding Drake Road and Neely Road, but regarding the four exclusion areas, just in general. Well, I, I didn't.
I think there was a change in my position on Neely and Drake.
Yeah.
Right, for technical.
So, the four exclusion areas currently have a hundred eighty-four vacation rentals, according to staff. Not one of those will go out of business tomorrow or a month from now, or six months from now, except if they sell or permit to revoke because of their misconduct. So, it doesn't have any immediate impact on employment or lodging opportunities. There might not be a lot of hotels out there, but there are a lot of smaller resorts. I don't know the room count on the resorts, but, you know, there, there would be, I would think several hundred, I'm not sure. Do you have any idea, Gary? And I would say too, that in very short order, depending on the outcome of the hearing, with, with my tracking, the application, and the position I expressed when, when it was sent back to the applicant for revision, there's gonna be somewhere around a hundred rooms added there. So, we're not constricting visitor opportunities at this point. It's, you know, and, and we could come back ten years from now, and, you know, the hundred eighty-four might only have gone down to a hundred sixty or something. We don't know. So, I appreciate, first and foremost, your lengthy family connection to the place. And you've never rode me there, but not up there. So, so, um, thank you for that, the input, and I appreciate your reconsider, reconsidering Neely and Drake. My motion will stand to basically accept staff, staff recommendation on all eleven.
So, since we have different votes on the different areas, would you mind just going through all?
No, I don't wanna, this is time, the staff wants.
Call the roll, maybe somebody else.
So, I will still make the motion applicable to all. If the second or a motion retains their second, then staff can just do a roll call by each. So, my motion stands.
He's looking for a second.
Is there a second?
Are you talking about all of them, this?
I'm moving all of them, but they will be voted on individually. So, it'd be the second.
I'll give you the second.
Thank you.
So, a roll call vote on Armstrong Woods?
On staff recommendation, which is exclusion for Armstrong Woods, since this may get a little bit more complicated, there's more here, I'm going to state the area and the staff recommendation for each, just so you guys are prepared for that. This is roll call for Armstrong Woods exclusion. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
No.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
We are on Austin Creek, which is a staff recommendation five percent cap. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Drake Road, recommendation for exclusion. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey? Eric Williams Park, Monterosa, staff recommendation for exclusion. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
No.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Alcienda, recommendation for five percent cap. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Staff recommendation, Monterrio, five percent cap. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Neely Road, staff recommendation for exclusion. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Let me get my breath. Northwood, staff recommendation for a five percent cap. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Rio Del, staff recommendation, five percent cap. Commissioner Carr?
Hmm, yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Summer Home Park, staff recommendation, five percent cap. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
Jarvis's Villanronde, staff recommendation, five percent cap. Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
That would conclude the D5 regems.
Okay, so we move on to item number two, ZCE twenty dash zero 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 two, zone change to add vacation rental exclusion combining district.
Could we, um, we wanna take a little, well, no, no, I, I wanna take a break, I'm ready to roll, but I, I wanted to add, we had a bunch of things we discussed before we got into looking at each area, about things that we wanted to recommend be addressed at the board level. Thing one was having a, a process on dealing, determining whether existing vacation rentals are non-conforming. We wanted to, oh, have something developed with respect to the, the toll of the business license in enforcing the, the existing conformance with the ordinance. We also talked about, under three on the list, we also wanted to talk about an administrative procedure and policy for the department, and how they would deal with a little bit more proactive review of what's going on with respect to the numbers and, and the enforcement. And we also, I, I thought we wanted to recommend, I don't know how we got this far, that the board consider down the road a countywide cap in the unincorporated area in addition to these, um, these recommendations on specific areas. I don't know whether that's something that just, that you guys would just convey to the board, or whether is that something we need to load on or include in our recommendation?
I mean, it's, it's kind of actually related to item number two, we're talking about the, creating the rental exclusion ex combining district and saying, well, let's make it the whole county, but then, um, to staff's point of, when you get concentrations in little areas, you really have to divide it up into a kind of a charter board and then...
Yeah.
I don't know, it's a, it's a tough one.
Well, we don't have, you know, commission support for, for doing that part, but I think the other administrative parts of this are really important for, to try to develop for, maybe before the board acts. Is that just, so, is that just something that you guys can, you know, have been expressed to the board, maybe, maybe with a, with an actual start on that before you get there?
We do have, obviously, significant notes being taken from this meeting as well as recording, I believe staff would be prepared to include either an attachment or a portion of the summary, depending on how far down the pledge start we already are, to the board to be able to identify all of the additional recommended actions related to this. I don't know that a, a formal vote would be necessary for that, because we would bring all of it forward, and then, of course, the board may direct or not direct as they see fit.
Well, I, I don't personally, I'll, you know, I'll make sure it's a supervisor at the board, so she's aware of it as well, so.
I'll do the same.
Yeah. So, we have Castle Road now, is that, is that item two? Item two, yes.
And as we have background, while we're changing out staff here, thank you, Gary, very much.
You're just moving over him.
I know, he's not going anywhere.
Assistant Quin.
I did want to do a thing up, that the reason that this application was not included in the countywide exzone list of projects, that this had actually been privately initiated by the neighborhood in advance of the countywide effort going forward, that staff would consider direction and hopes for direction from the commission for us to bring this item forward with Gary's packet in order to ensure that they also are able to meet that deadline to get in with that narrow window for the, for the, the gas that we will have in the exzone, so, between now and the moratorium, or the moratorium and then on the supercar. So, staff would intend to bring this forward with Gary's item on April twenty-fourth, and would hope for some, if your commission chooses to approve the item, would also hope for some direction to confirm that.
This is for the side of chairman.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman McCaffrey and Commissioners, this is Claudia Diaz, and I am the project review manager of the Department of the District. Before you today is file number ZCE twenty dash zero 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 two, with a zone change to add the vacation rental exclusion combining zone on twenty-two parcels off North Castle Road and Hafner Street in Sonoma.
Claudia, would you please lower your mic?
Close it, close it.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. The site is located in unincorporated Sonoma County, about a half mile east of the city of Sonoma city limits. The project area is accessed by Castle Road, you can see it here with this little red dot. The general plan and use designation for the project area is rural residential, which provides lands for low-density residential development. The project area is outlined in blue here. Half the, half the parcels within the project area is zone rural residential, while the other half of the project area is zone agriculture and residential. Several parcels have arid area corridor, valley, oak habitat, and scenic resource overlays. Several parcels within the project area are located within the local mountain guidelines. Again, project area outlined here in blue. The project set is comprised of twenty-two parcels ranging from zero point eight zero acres to six point two five acres in size, totaling fifty-six acres. The project area is located a half mile east of the city of Sonoma city limits and a quarter mile away from the nearest vacation rental exclusion zone, which is the area below, in orange, it's the nut tree, apple tree neighborhood. The project area is made up of single-family residences, low-density residential, no visitor-serving uses are located within the project area. The project proposes a zone change to add the vacation rental exclusion zone on twenty-two parcels on North Castle Road and Hafner Street in Sonoma. The project proposal was initiated and supported by all current property owners within the project area. The following, the following areas are where the X combining zone is applied, in areas where there's inadequate road access or off-street parking, where there's a prevalence of vacation rentals detrimental to the residential character of neighborhoods, where the housing stock needs protection from conversion to visitor-serving uses, where there's a significant fire hazard due to topography, access, or vegetation, where residential character is to be preserved or preferred, and in other areas where the board determines public interest requires prohibition of establishment and operation of vacation rentals. This is just a background on prior actions on the vacation rental ordinance and X combining zone, if you need to go over that again. And just background on this project, on February seventh and twenty-fourth of 2020, the applicant and property owners within the project area got together to discuss adding the vacation rental exclusion combining zone to the neighborhood. During this meeting, they discussed concerns regarding current conditions of the neighborhood, including substandard road conditions, increase in fire risk preserving the residential character, and their support for, including their parcel within the X combining zone. The project includes adding twenty-two parcels to the vacation rental exclusion zone. These parcels range down from zero point eighty acres in size to six point two five acres and consist of low-density residential and full-time residence. The project area has about a ten to thirteen-foot wide paved road and is located within a moderate to high fire hazard severity zone. As I mentioned, the project area is located within a moderate and high fire hazard severity zone, yellow being moderate and orange being high. Cal Fire designated these severity zones based on consideration of wildland fuels, terrain, weather, and other relevant factors. Permit, or the county's fire marshal visited the site and determined that the roads do not meet fire safety standards. Permit, or the county's fire marshal visited the site and determined that the roads do not meet fire safety standards, found in chapter thirteen of the Sanomacanica. The residents are occupied, the project area is occupied again by full-time residents. There are no active vacation rental permits in the project area, there are no commercial or visitor serving uses within the project area, and the neighborhood is supportive of this project and wishes to preserve any of that character. The parcel is consistent with policy HE one K found in the housing element and housing element program six, in that it requires continued regulation of the use of existing residences on residential loans for vacation rentals, and requires that the county will review the vacation rental ordinance to limit conversions of permanent housing stock and native vacation rental uses more compatible, and to facilitate enforcement when necessary. And the project meets criteria to add the vacation rental exclusion zone, found in article seventy-nine of the Sanomacanica. These are my findings, as I mentioned, the proposed project to add the vacation rental exclusion zone to twenty-two parcels on North Castle Road and Half Moon Street is consistent with article seventy-nine. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the board supervisors find the project exempt from CEQA and adopt an ordinance to add the vacation rental exclusion combining zone to the twenty-two parcels. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Uh, any questions from Mr. Carr?
A couple, Mr. Chairman, just, could you point out on one of the maps, maybe the zoning map or the general plan map, which road is actually Castle Road versus which is North Castle?
Yes, let's...
Because I think Castle goes up between the two, the existing exclusion area and then the proposed.
So right here, this, right here, I know it's hard to see, but that's Castle Road.
Okay.
And then, um, once you turn left up here and go north, that's North Castle Road, and North Castle Road, and then Half Moon Street is an access statement then.
So this restriction really is just North Castle Road and then the little T intersection there.
Correct.
And, and when I drove out there and up and down the top part of the T, I couldn't figure out how to get back to the AR two parcels. Is there, but then I saw there's a gate, there was a gate there that looked like a long road beyond that. Is that, is that how people get back to those, through a gate?
Um, the, one of the applicants is here, and you can speak.
You don't have, yeah, you can, happy to hear you. I'm just curious, because I couldn't get back, but I, I mean, Castle Road looks in pretty good shape, so that's, it's really the North Castle Road that the folks here are concerned about, and then Half Moon is really a short, this is kind of a short, you know, okay, thank you very much.
And it is a dead end as well, so it's a, it's a dead end, so one way and one way out.
One way out, thank you.
Any other questions from the speakers? Okay, I'll just, I'll wrap the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
The applicant, if you'd like to come up and speak?
Yeah, just for a moment. My name is Chuck William.
Is this all?
I'm sorry. My name's Chuck Williamson, and I am the applicant. And the only thing I'd add to what Claudette's done, and she's done a great job, but North Castle and Half Moon, where I live, the only way out is down Castle Road. And so these are ten, twelve foot wide roads, one car roads. So that area burned, my neighbor's house burned to the ground in two thousand seventeen, our house burned. So, you know, I think there's a safety consideration after listening to many hours of your discussion about egress, and the character of the neighborhood is such that, you know, they're all full-time residents, we all know and love each other. So I think this has got great support, and frankly, it's kind of a little piece of the gun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next we have Trump.
Thank you for this opportunity. I want to speak to this development and also the surrounding area as well. There are linearies in these areas of farm stays and home-based businesses that have visitors and clients and guests that are even more transient. Are they going to be banned? You have people staying in campgrounds at night in or near these areas during the summer? Are you going to prohibit overnight camping? Why single out vacation rentals when they have a property manager to inform them to leave, because that's what the new ordinance will have, and a manual to instruct them in the event of emergency? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, next, Regina. Regina Rollin?
Maybe left already?
Uh, Laura?
Laura C., who is on the chart.
How about this?
Laura, Charlie, oh, she should have been with us.
Did that was a different item?
It was, which is on that.
Eva Ray?
We've been deserted.
Thanks for sticking it out.
They're smarter than we are.
Max, is Max still here? Carol? Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for listening to me twice. I actually had meant to put my card in for the first time, but, um, sorry. I will say, um, in terms of this one, I completely agree that fire safety is an issue and is the best reason to choose, as you have done for all of the other zones that we looked at. But I think that neighborhood character, again, I will say, we cannot choose who buys the property next door to us in any case. It's wonderful that a neighborhood is consistent, loves each other now, but should one of them move, um, they don't know who they will get, whether it will be a full-time resident, part-time resident, retiree, somebody with family who makes a lot of noise when the kids jump in the pool. And I think that it is incumbent upon you, as officials of this county, to think and listen about the choices that you make with, you know, an even hand and intelligence, and appreciate that you're here to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there anyone who didn't turn in the speaker card who would like to come and speak?
I can't resist them.
Please, welcome back.
Well, I, I just, normally Gilroy, I live in the Sanoma Valley too. This one has been a long time coming. I mean, when we first wanted to find out about our exclusion zones work, the first locals that we went to were the Castle Road people, a little different, they don't keep chickens like we do. But other than that, I mean, it was clearly something that they'd already been working on, put a lot of money into, and that was two years ago. I mean, this has been forever getting to you, so even on just on that, I know that's not a reason to approve, but it certainly is a negative reason to make a decision and move it along. Um, so that's, that's all, I want to say, thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Would you speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and action.
Um, I'm in favor of this. I, I did want to say something about neighborhood character. You know, we didn't really get much into it in the discussions over the larger areas, that neighborhood character to me is something that gets kicked around and sometimes is criticized for ignoring the, those who have not had the privileges that white America has had over the years. But I, to me, neighborhood character was exemplified better by one of the speakers back in SDC and a couple of earlier things, and actually they wrote comments today came in for this, and that is judging neighborhood character by whether or not, when you go next door to ask for some sugar for making a pie, and those people don't, they aren't in your neighborhood. And they, this particular commenter, they mentioned a situation where she was in a group of seven homes, four of which were vacation rentals, and she used to commonly go, whenever she may apply, she went next door and borrowed sugar, or something else. And those people, either the house was empty, or those people were tourists and had no knowledge of who she was and she of them, so I, I think that's part of this issue that maybe gets swept under the rug a little bit, I mean, fire safety is a huge thing, and, and access and quality of the road service and stuff, but the residential communities in our, at least certainly in Sanoma Valley, and I'm guessing what, feel like there's a change going on, and I think that's what's going on under North Castle Road. And I think preventing future vacation rentals is really a good idea, so, uh, depending on what you guys want to do, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I just want to make one comment.
Yes, Commissioner Jolardi?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. These, the members of this particular neighborhood, all twenty-two of them agree, and they've ponied up the money to bring it forward, because this is brought forward by an applicant, not the county. What does it cost for them to do that? I'm just curious.
At this time, it's been around eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars. So they've ponied up the money and they all agree. To me, that's really huge.
It's a good thing, because it would have cost a lot more if they hadn't agreed.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just think that that's, this is what they want for their neighborhood, and I, I think that just speaks volumes.
Commissioner Wilson? I actually was going to make a comment similar to what Pat just said. You know, and I, this, this whole discussion seems to start with the premise or the narrative has, has somehow developed, that every property is automatically entitled to vacation rentals, and it's somehow rolling that back, and it goes to the point that I made or alluded to earlier, that this whole phenomenon of internet-driven vacation rentals, to another point that Pat made, places change. And in this instance, the, the change in the place related to vacation rentals is driven by this technology largely. And, you know, I don't look at this as that we're, you know, we're taking away, I mean, zoning is, the premise of zoning is that you allow certain things and you prohibit other things, to exclude other things. And, you know, when I look at this, we're not taking away the ability to rent property in the traditional way. We're not taking away the, you know, the ability to invest in rented property the traditional way. What we're talking about is whether or not short-term rentals is just automatically presumed to be consistent with, with every neighborhood, and, and it's not. And, and the idea that, you know, in residential areas or like little small community really, you know, we limit how many bars there are, we limit how many restaurants there are, we limit how many gas stations there are, we do all sorts of things where we put limits, and all of that has to do with a construct that is largely about community and neighborhood character. So this is not new terrain, this is just trying to catch up to and get ahead of this wave of, of new activity in the community, and I, I don't think emphasizing even, not just including, but emphasizing community character is something that's inappropriate when we look at these things. You know, and I've used this example, for those of you that are familiar with Freestone and the bakery in Freestone, phenomenally successful business. If, if you took that exact business and opened it up at a script, a script commercial center in Warner Park, do you think it would do the same business? It's a destination, and the difference between those two is the definition of community character. It's a place that people visit because it's special. So, you know, I'm, I'm complete agreement with this application, and I'm looking forward to our more broad consideration of the whole vacation rental issue countywide, thank you.
Would you like to offer a motion?
Yes, I would, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
We have another roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Jolardi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koenigshofer?
Yes.
And Sheriff McCaffrey?
Yes.
So that concludes our reading today.
Before you, quick before, just real quick before you, I, I don't want to let this meeting pass without complaining about the short time that we've had to review the materials. You know, I would have actually liked to have driven to all of the twenty-one sites, I had a chance to drive to the ones in the first district. And, uh, reading through the comments at eleven o'clock this morning, trying to glance through the comments, I had the number of people who made mention of the fact that they had three days basically to review this, and, you know, not all were retired. I, I asked, sent an email to the staff the other day to ask, and we talked about this at our March thirtieth planning agency meeting, so that we could avoid any reminders from, from Ms. Klein that we can't talk about stuff that's not in the agenda, so, so I asked how this put on, because I think this really hit bad. It was really bad in SDC, it was really bad for this, and there's been a couple of others, and, you know, I, I've worked inside the planning department, and I know the pressures that are on the staff to roll things out as quickly as possible. But I also know that you have the option, sure, running a follow of the bosses, but I really think that there's three days for this, and I, I get the deadlines and all that kind of stuff. The housing element, we're already in the builder's remedy period on the housing element, and that is just a potential disaster, and we still don't have it here, and, and so we don't have a certified element after three years, spending three years on that. And so I, I just want to mention for the commissioners to expect, hopefully expect something on the agenda to talk about this, because I, there's got to be some way to change this practice. Anyway, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
As the upper optimist, I did want to let you know, it's maybe on the agenda as something more positive, like in process improvement update, but...
Okay, always good. Thanks.
So thank you, any other question or comments? Seeing done? Pleasure to meet you, thank you, see you next time.
And as a reminder...